Okay. I call the meeting to order. A city council meeting Tuesday, May 8th, 2018. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. The council is all present and Steve Ballard is present by phone. Hi, Steve. Welcome.
Hi, Louise. Thank you.
Thank you. And first of all, we have approval of minutes. We have April 10th regular council meeting, April 16th, April 18th, and April 23rd special council meetings. The minutes were circulated. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none. Those minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Okay. Public input. Would anyone like to come and speak to the council? I don't think we had anyone sign up, did we? But you're welcome to come and speak to the council tonight.
Louise, real quick before we move on, just wanted to introduce JJ so he can get going. He's just got done driving for 24 and a half hours or so.
Oh.
So this is Jonathan Johnson, JJ.
Yeah. Hi, JJ. How are you doing?
I guess I just wanted to introduce him so we can go home and get some sleep after driving Nevada last night.
Wonderful. Oh, my goodness. It's great to see you again, JJ.
I appreciate it. Can't wait to get started with the community and put in some work.
Wow, you drove pretty much straight?
Yeah, nonstop. So my wife, well, fiance, basically, we just kind of took turns. I, of course, drove more hours, but yeah.
Wow. Good for you. Well, welcome. Welcome to Iowa.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. Nice meeting you.
Then we'll, okay, so that was our public input. I don't think we have anything else there. First of all, is there any, does council have any conflicts of interest with any items on the agenda? They should speak now and let me know. Okay. Would you record that no one has any conflict of interest? And then the first order of business is streets and sidewalks. And Dottie, you're going to go through your report?
Yeah. This will be brief. We've already washed the streets and picked up the sand barrels. And so now I just want to address a few things. One being the summer traffic issues. And the reason I want to mention that is because school will soon be out and there'll be children everywhere. So that behooves everybody to drive more cautiously. And in an attempt to achieve that, I've talked with Nate and he said that they could place their patrol cars at intermittent episodes at different places throughout the city so that people are aware there are police there watching and that they will tick it. The Kosher Highland streets are already 20 miles an hour, which, you know, is a grasshopper, I guess, speed. But it's about as slow as you can get anywhere in the county. So that is already slow, so the sign is clear. And there's a stop sign at the corner of Highland, so that keeps people from rushing onto Kosher. Closing streets, excuse me, closing streets is not a solution. That the city needs to be open all the time for emergencies and business and just traffic in general. Speed bumps are not reasonable. They are contraindicated in terms of snow removal. And I don't think in a small little city like ours that, you know, we should need that sort of thing. I think that everyone should respect one another and drive according to the speed limit. We're talking about, I've been talking with Nate about purchasing an electric traffic sign, one of those that alerts people to slow down and to, you know, drive certain miles an hour. It would be cost effective if we could buy one maybe used or, you know, kick out the money for a new one if we have to. And then a little gurney or cart so that they can move it all over the city. So that way we could use it all over and anytime and it would take care of the whole community, not just an isolated area of the town. I think it would be money well spent. I'd much prefer that than borrowing or sharing with another city because sharing generally doesn't work in the long run. Now, the signage issue. As I recall, signage is my responsibility and not yours, Nick. So what I've been doing is working with Kent and with Josiah. And we're ordering 50 new signs to replace those little tiny ones that tell people not to park on football days and that it is a tow zone. Because the police are authorized to tow when they have given notice and any kind of, tickets are ridiculous, especially on football day because you never collect them. So if we want to take care of the traffic problem, the way to do it is to tow on football Let's see. What else? One more thing. In an attempt to keep the city clean, I'm suggesting that we perhaps purchase a few more waste barrels. And then I would also like to have a way of providing doggy poop bags throughout the city so that when people go out and they forget to take the bag or they have not been trained to take a bag, there would be one available so they could pick it up and carry it home with them after it's used and not dump it. But that would take care of some of the fecal discharge that we see. And I think that's about it for my report.
Well, I think you wanted to talk about crime stoppers.
Oh, oh, yes. I'm sorry.
I mean, that was important to you.
That's a biggie. On August 7th is National Night Out for Crime Stoppers. So we're going to have a picnic, ice cream in Tar Court from 5:00 to 7:00. I would also appreciate not having a farmer's market that day because last year, everyone couldn't get there like they could the year before because George Street was closed off for construction purposes and no one had the foresight or the presence of mind to take those barriers down that day so that they could come down George Street because it wasn't wet or sticky or anything. It was, they were just waiting to do the other side of the street. So anyhow, it'll be, there'll be ice cream. There'll be some other little prizes. I'm hoping that Macduff, the crime dog, will come like he did last year. And last year, we had the fire department from Iowa City and the Johnson County Sheriff and the police from the county and from Iowa City. So everybody, all law enforcement joins in. And it's for the benefit of educating the communities as to what the police do. It's a great opportunity also for them to get acquainted with the children and the children to realize that the police are not frightening figures, but they're good neighbors and they take care of them. So everybody's invited, the families, from 5:00 to 7:00, Tar Court, August 7th. And especially children, but, you know, mom and dad can have ice cream too, so.
And then you want to talk about Triangle Park a little bit?
Yeah. And Triangle Park is being planned as we speak. I've been trying to balance Rotary against the interests of the city. And I have a deadline with certain things that have to be done with Rotary. But I've been meeting with Josiah and we're looking, we've already surveyed it and Jim Glasgow has removed the flagpole. There'll be a matter of excavation of the electrical stuff that's there. We're going to have to landscape, of course, probably just raise everything and re-sod and all. We're going to reduce the Melrose scape by six feet in two or three years when that project comes to do. And so we're going to have to relocate the Kosher sidewalk from the beginning of Triangle Park down to Melrose. So that will take some doing as well. But the plans are underway and we're plotting it out now to see what, how much space we have and what we can, the size of the things that we want to purchase.
And you have moved the flagpole.
The flagpole's out, yeah.
Yeah.
It's gone.
Are there questions for Dottie on any of her report?
I have a couple. Can I just make sure that Lemur Court is on your radar for speed control this summer? I know there's a couple of families.
Everything will be, the whole city.
Good. Just specifically, I've had some requests for that area. Dottie, I can help you with the waste barrels and poo bags if you'd like since I work with Steve Smith on that.
Actually, both of you need to be aware, I was going to comment on that after you're done, but the poop bag issue, I already asked about it and Steve was not inclined to invest any additional, it takes, it takes more work for him to consider.
Yeah, he might not do the poop bag specifically, but we'll have to get him to do, to maybe monitor the trash cans. And then may I come to your next meeting with Josiah on the Triangle Park update?
We're not yet. We're still just trying to put it together. And if anybody comes, I've got to have Rotary and I've tried to keep everybody, you know, just.
Second council person, may I?
Hmm. What, pardon?
As a second council person, may I attend?
Well, there's myself and Josiah, so for right now, no.
No?
No. Okay.
I know a lot about landscaping.
Okay. No, when it comes to landscaping, you're very welcome. We aren't there yet, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
How about on the selection of equipment and physical structures around that? I know that the Vision program, you know, architectural team that came made very specific stylistic recommendations. And I'm just wondering, how are those coming along and when can council have a sneak peek of selected?
I've just explained, when Josiah and I have it plotted out so that we have an idea of how much space and what is available, I will share with everyone and Rotary the choices that we have made.
Right. I just want to make sure because I thought, you know, Virginia was asking about landscaping. I'm asking about physical equipment.
And I'm answering your question.
Yes, you are. Thank you, Dottie.
Anything else for Dottie? Okay. Josiah, you want to give your report? I know you submitted a written report.
I did. It's pretty simple this month. I was just kind of updating. There was a question, I got some information back from Iowa City. We've been getting these buses.
You're going to have to put your microphone up, I think. Thank you.
Yeah. This is, this is Steve. Sorry to interrupt. The closer the people can speak to their microphones, the easier it is for me to hear. Thanks.
It's like I was saying, Steve is a great guy.
Yeah.
So, sorry, so the.
That was a good one.
The bus information, remember from last meeting, we've been getting the data from Iowa City on bus riders?
That's right.
I did not get an update this month. Did request that. But one of the questions was the discrepancy between the inbound and outbound riders and why is that or what reason might that be? So they did give me a feedback on that and their observation is that, so there's more people coming back from downtown, more riders, because what they see is that more people who are downtown either around noon time or at the end of the day, even if the bus is not going to where they're going, they'll grab the first bus available, which gets out here, which is that Sunset bus. And so there's a lot of apartments west, just west of University Heights, along Emerald Street and beyond. So what they're saying is a lot of people grab those buses, come out, get off on Sunset Street and just walk west into those areas in Iowa City. So that's, so that's their observation of why there's more people heading out and getting off the buses than there are getting specifically picked up on Sunset Street.
Yeah, but just on the PM time was the, you know, the question of the methodology, how are they collecting ridership? Like who's getting onboard?
Yeah.
To come back, you know, westbound into University Heights. So you're saying that at the Melrose Sunset, that's where they're all getting off and walking west? Because we're not registering bodies leaving anywhere at Highland and Sunset or Oak Crest and Sunset. And that's the discrepancy that the groups of residents that have been monitoring this are saying, you know, we're missing people coming back along those two points. And so I just want to clarify, what point are you talking about? Because you're saying it's Sunset westbound because of the apartments.
So they did not specify the stop. They're saying people get off at points along Sunset.
Okay.
And then, and then from there, walk west.
I don't disagree that that is at all the situation.
So there's no particular stop.
So I'm concerned that even those exit, those bodies exiting on Sunset are not being registered in their data. That's my only comment, that it's not being captured.
Well.
Or at least that comment, that explanation is not consistent with the data that's, that's showing up.
So what the data they're getting is from their drivers on those weeks, just making notes, how many people got on or off. So if they're doing that incorrectly or wrong, obviously the data's all wrong, but
Right.
I'm assuming it's fairly straightforward to count.
I would hope.
So unless somebody wants to ride along.
I might just go out and do a couple of tests.
Maybe I can do that, yeah.
Maybe.
Dottie can help.
Volunteer.
Any other volunteer ride along? We've done police ride alongs. All right. Thanks for looking into that, Josiah.
And the other thing I tried to get from them, which I didn't get an update, but just as a reminder, they thought June timeframe to install the bus shelter that they purchased.
June.
So that's it from them for now.
Are there any questions for Josiah? Any other questions? And you, you were saying in your report, Olive Court is going to start more this month.
Yeah. Yeah, we need to, we had to finish up projects that had started, so now that those have caught up, I can move on.
Okay.
I have a question. We're getting the repainting of pavement markings.
I can't hear you, Virginia.
Sorry. We're looking at quotes for repainting of pavement markings before the June meeting. This is an old issue that just never goes away, even though the pavement marking has faded and faded and faded over five years. People still ask me about this. Can we please put in the RFP to paint the crossing at Olive Court that crosses over to Stella? I know there are mixed opinions on this and we got information from the MPO three years ago on this. Their opinion was that there's a crossing with a signal nearby. They would like people to cross at the signal, but the fact is people don't cross at the signal.
That's right.
And that, they said there is a reasonable exception to be made if the crossing is in a city center type situation. And I think especially now that the hotel is going in, I think this qualifies as a city center and I would like to have that zebra crossing repainted at Olive.
Should there be more signage also?
No, I don't.
That's another step we could take, but for now, I'm just asking to have the pavement marked.
I think it's, if it's just striped, that would be adequate, don't you? Yeah.
So I guess I'll move to ask Josiah to include pavement marking at Olive Court Crossing.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Sylvia. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay. Carrie. And that's everything, right, Josiah?
Correct.
Okay. And nothing else for Josiah? Well, thank you very much, Josiah. Maybe you should stay just a little bit until we hear from University Lake Partners. I see that Greg Stiltner and Jim Glasgow are here tonight and you're going to give us an update, I understand. Thank you for coming.
Steve, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. We were hoping to have some blueprints and civil engineering drawings done for you guys tonight. Unfortunately, we don't. The architect literally just got done with them today. He emailed me or called me today and said, let's meet tomorrow. So we have a meeting with the architect tomorrow at 3:30. The civil engineer was waiting on some elevation drawings from the architect to complete his portion. The civil engineer is really close to being done. He, all he needs is just a couple of measurements from the elevation for, from the architect. So civil engineer will be 100% done with his drawings for review and I'll get those over to Josiah as soon as, as soon as I get those done, completed. And then the architect, I'm going to review his plans, you know, tomorrow. And then we're going to put that together in an updated PUD amendment and send it off to Steve Ballard for, for a public meeting, if you guys want to set one up. In the meantime, we spoke with the railroad. They, they are very, very workable. They're, they're excited about the project. They're actually helping us with ideas and they were great to work with. We spent better half of a day with them. So they, they've been very good. And so they're essentially optimistic on giving us our needs, actually giving us a little bit more than what we needed because the wall that we're going to put up on the north side of the lot, we actually needed three more feet so the construction guy could actually work and get his wall done. So they were, they were okay with that. So they're, we're working through that with them right now. They have to, they, it's an access easement, it's called. So we're working with them. And then other than that, as soon as I have some stuff for you guys to review, I'll get it TFS I can. I'm pushing these guys. I'm calling them every day, trying to get it done.
So it looks like we might have a development agreement, version two. Actually, we don't even have a version two. Maybe within the next seven to 10 days, correct?
Absolutely. That's my plan.
Steve, can you comment? Do we have to have a public hearing or what has to happen?
Yeah.
For an amendment?
Yeah. Yeah. So for the amendment, the council will need to hold a, a public hearing and that'll need to be preceded by some amount of notice, you know, I think the usual statute, statutory notice of four days. So we're going to need probably a little over a week, you know? So if we get a, we get the application, we can publish the notice. It'll take about two or four days for the press citizen to publish it and then the council, you know, can have its meeting four days later. So it'll be about eight, nine days ahead of time. So if we get an application, you know, say, you know, next Monday, then unless the council is going to have a special meeting, it looks to me like that would be on the June agenda. But, but if the council wants to have a special meeting, we just need to provide time for that notice to be published and like I said, about nine days, I guess is what I'm figuring.
Can you get that next week?
Absolutely. I think that's very possible.
The June meeting is June 12th. And do you think you need something before or?
Yes, if that's possible, yes. Love to have something before. So what I'd like to do is email all the city council, our updated plans, somehow to see if they want to do a work session first and then maybe a, a public hearing, a public meeting.
You mean kind of a work session to just go through the plans?
To go through the plans, yeah. That way, because I don't know, I don't know that you guys would want to vote on the amendment without discussing it, would you?
Yeah, we've done it before. So long as we receive.
We do it all.
The paperwork ahead of time.
I think we could attempt it, you know?
Yeah, that's fine. So let's, I'll get it out to you and then you guys can decide.
Right, because the amendment, all the amendment pertains to is parking, green space and, and the rooftop hotel, I mean, the rooftop restaurant, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And so if we look at our calendars on Tuesday, because we have baseball and T-ball now.
Actually, that would be a farmer's market day?
Well, I mean, some, the meetings are farmer's market day.
That's true, but.
Well, I, yeah, what, well, I mean, if you look at the 22nd.
Okay, that's still good, yeah.
That's not farmer's market. 22nd of May?
Mm-hmm.
Is that an, I don't know, next, that's not nine days, is it?
Well, it depends when they, are you talking about a work session or have a special meeting?
No, a special meeting.
Special meeting.
Yeah, it would be, starting.
Yeah, so as long as, whatever, 22 minus nine, I mean, we'd have to have it by probably this week to get it published in time, I think.
Oh.
Ooh.
Yeah, you're right.
And we can set the public hearing, if the council wants, we can set the public hearing, assuming that the application is going to be submitted, but we need to have it a few, you know, several days ahead of time so, you know, people can read the notice and come and look at it.
How about 23, 24? Those are, that's Wednesday and Thursday.
Yeah. Does that work for anyone? I don't know. I know.
Steve, I'm calculating, I'm calculating out to the 23rd or the 24th and I'm using calendar days for the 15th. And that's starting tomorrow.
What do you think of May 24th?
I'm free.
That's better for me than the 22nd even.
Yeah, I'm free on the 24th.
And Nick is free.
Yeah, I think for the 24th, we'd probably need to have, have it in hand by the 15th.
Yeah.
Right.
But you can do that.
That's very doable, yes.
He said it's doable. And is the 24th okay with Virginia and?
Yeah, I can make that work. We can't like piggyback this onto the meeting on the 15th.
No, we don't have enough time.
Yeah.
It has to be.
It has, we need that nine day and that's only a week.
Okay.
Wow.
I know. So the 24th is a Thursday.
What time would it be? Seven?
Seven?
Yeah.
Unless somebody says they want it earlier.
I can't, I've got crime stoppers earlier.
Oh, okay. You want it. And Nick says, okay. Well, let's, Steve, are you available on the 24th?
Yes.
Are you available?
Yep.
Okay. We'll, we'll set it for the 24th. And then we'll go over the plans, but you'll send the plans, you'll have them.
Hopefully they have this week.
Okay.
Hope it too.
And then everyone can review them and have questions. Okay, very good.
And that's going to include a updated landscaping plan and a stormwater management plan.
Yep.
And could you give an update on the trees? You had a little bit of a.
Yeah. We just started removing trees last week or so and we're just going through that process. And we had one dead tree that I talked to Virginia about, so that was supposed to save and then, then there's some trees that we talked about on the front that kind of got chopped up by the power company that I was talking to her about. So we kind of got that figured out. She wants to wait on that, so.
Okay. Are you bringing any equipment there yet or what's going on?
Yeah, we got quite, there's a really big machine over there making all those trees into mulch.
Oh, I see.
So if anybody wants mulch at all.
So if anybody wants mulch?
Yes, there's a.
There's mulch?
A mountain of mulch over there right now. Anybody can come and get anytime they want.
Anytime?
Anytime.
Okay.
You can borrow my truck.
Yeah, so there's tons and tons of mulch.
My husband's.
We'll have to, we have to truck it out of there, so if somebody else comes and trucks it out of there, I'm fine with it.
Sylvie can take care of it. Sylvie can take care of it.
Yeah, I'm in the garden these days.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Greg or Jim?
I don't want it.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
No problem. I don't want it.
Then we'll go on. So Josiah, I guess you're, you can leave. And thank you for attending. Mayor's report here. I have the meetings and in detail of what was done, if there's any questions. Other than that, oh, I don't have the Arbor Day or the Bicycle Proclamation.
Oh.
Oh, my gosh, we need to have that. Oh my gosh, we need to have that. I need to...
Can you access it from last year?
Well, we, I gave her the proclamations this year. But I mean, I totally, well, maybe we could, I did. I emailed them to you.
Louise, what I'm saying is, could you read it using last year's minutes for the proclamation? If you borrowed the same...
We'll look a little more and we'll just do it.
Give me a minute or two.
Yeah, I did the Arbor Day and, but anyway. The other thing, why she's looking for the proclamations is, do you have it?
Yeah, it's just this paper.
Okay, great. Thank you. Guess where I got this proclamation from?
Chris, can you just look for the bike one?
The Arbor Day. How do you move this? This is the end, this is the whole thing? But no, there's something down here that I, how do you move it? Oh, down here. I got you. Sorry. I like this part. When I read it, I thought this was good. So, "In the city of University Heights, I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations dated this 8th day of May. Louise Frome, Mayor." Thank you very much. And thanks to Virginia because she's filled out the application so we can be a Tree City USA. And every year, we'll have an Arbor Day proclamation. I guess I don't close it. Thank you.
I found the email where you said you want to put it on the agenda, but I don't have an attachment.
Okay, so, here we go. Well, bless your heart. So, yeah. Okay, so, this is a proclamation for Bicycle Month in University Heights. And I, Louise Frome, Mayor of the city of University Heights, dear, do hereby proclaim this month of May 2018 to be Bicycle Month in University Heights, Iowa, and encourage all citizens to ride their bicycles to work, to the store, to the park, to school, and with friends and family to provoke many benefits achieved from bicycling." There we go. Thank you. And now, I have a report about zoning commission and tree board. And I received an email from Pat Bauer last night stating he was resigning from the zoning commission. And I want to thank Pat for his work with the city for the past 18 years, for his service on the zoning commission. And we'll miss him. Thanks again. So, I have, we'll have an opening, another opening on the zoning commission. And so, over the next couple of months, I would like people who are, residents who are interested to apply for the zoning commission appointment. And you can contact a city council or myself and they'll tell me. And we'll have another appointment soon. And so, tonight, I have ordinance, which number is it?
So, I want to make one slight adjustment to the resolution.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Excuse me. 18-19 was already used, which is my error. So, we are going to make this 18-19A as an Anderson, just so that we can make the designation between the two.
Okay, so 19A is before you. And I recommend you appoint Patricia Yegi to the zoning commission and Mike Sherrod to the tree board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Virginia. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Dottie, you seconded?
Yeah.
And then discussion?
Great. I'm really excited that we are, number one, that we have a tree board and that we have a zoning commission. Zoning commissions are required by Iowa law. Every city that is, a city has to have one. And the tree board was something that was designed or created thanks to Virginia's efforts about four years ago. And at first, there was quite a bit of skepticism as to whether the tree board was necessary, what would it do, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm happy to see that the function of the tree board has been very productive to the development of our tiny town into a lush, green landscape. And so, as the city continues to grow and we are creating new commissions, new boards, and new opportunities for residents to come on board and do their civic duty or just participate, I also thought that it would be a good idea for council to start stepping up and asking a little bit more questions on those commissions or boards that pose a little bit more long-term consideration because these appointments are for four years. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Louise, the, the tree board...
They're for five.
For five years. So, five years is a really long time to serve on a board or a commission or a committee. And with that brings a great deal of policy responsibility that that group is formulating, considering, and thinking about. And so, tonight, I wanted to open by asking if the candidates or the appointees could come to the podium and have a couple of questions, you know, asked of them to see, you know, where they stand on their vision of the body that they're joining, et cetera. I think this is very typical.
Well, I don't think everybody's here.
That's okay. I know that Pat is here, so...
Does council want to hear this?
Yes, we are. Well, yeah, so the res... No, no, we're not talking about that. The resolution is with a consent of council. That's not, you know, and I see this as part of the information gathering process to gain consent. It's not, you know, anything different than what Congress does to ask about potential appointees when the president nominates. So...
See, it's submitted.
Yeah.
Qualifications, they both submitted.
That's not the issue. I have a couple of policy questions to ask, all related to zoning, all related to, you know, how that might be managed.
Does council want to consider this or do you want to consider the resolution?
I'm ready to vote.
I mean, I was under the impression that...
Do you want to vote? Do you want to vote?
I just want to hear.
Okay, the council wants to vote. So, roll call vote.
I'm going to have to abstain, Madam Mayor, because I don't have information on the vote.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Miller?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Casada?
I'm abstaining because I'm not being allowed to ask some, you know, very general, broad questions on the seat that is getting appointed.
Herbals?
Aye.
Carrie?
Okay. We'll go on to, do I have another agenda item here? No, we'll go on to... Oh, yes. I don't have that. I, yes, review of city clerk and city treasurer salaries. Okay, I have, when we did this in March, I believe, it occurred to me that what we did was we gave a cost of living to the city clerk and the city treasurer, which was 2.1%. So, that was a 30 cent an hour increase for Lori and a 33 cent increase for Chris Anderson. So, I would like to put in front of the council that they consider a raise because it just was a cost of living and I think they need a raise. And when I review, Lori has been with the city for...
14 years.
15 years. And Chris has been with the city for 11 this year. And they're at, currently Lori's at $17.66 with her cost of living. And Chris is at 1602. And they, and Chris started, at 1602, she started at $14 an hour 11 years ago. And Lori started at $12 an hour 15 years ago. And in going through this process, I talked to Nate and the police received a dollar an hour raise. And I would like to see council increase them to at least a dollar an hour. It's been, I have the figures here if you want to go through them. But in 20, July 2011, Chris went from 14 to 15 dollars an hour, you know, after four and a half, five years there. And so, they've been getting very little raises. And I think it's time to catch them up a little bit, like we did with the police. And so, would anyone like to look this over, discuss it, or?
I'd like to discuss it because Louise and I worked on this issue back in March and we were to come back to the table with proposals. And one of the things that was striking to me was that for some period of time, the city altogether skipped over any raises. So, the way I'm viewing this, and it's a question of fairness, you know, if the city forgot to give people raises for a series of many years, then the way I view it is, is a catch-up. So, it's more of a catch-up raise that would be, that would be applied here and nothing extraordinary. I think some of our residents may think that a dollar raise is not what some of them, you know, get in their hourly, in their hourly salaries. And that's, you know, I would ask them to consider that for a number of years, we just didn't, simply didn't do a review of raises. And...
We'd increase the rates by a dollar.
So, I, so I support that.
So, there's a motion by Virginia for a dollar an hour piece and a second by Lisa. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Okay, thank you very much.
We'll be getting a raise now, too.
Thank you. Okay, did I get everything here?
When does council get a raise?
On my, I know, I don't want to skip anything. Thanks for helping me with the proclamations. And so, we'll go to the legal report. Steve?
Thank you. I don't have much to add to my written report, aside from what's on the agenda. Resolution 1820 extends the city's development agreement with the city with regard to the OUP project. Back in November, I believe it was, the compensation was amended to be hourly. So, the city only compensates Glenn for hours that he works. The amounts are reimbursable by the OUP development. In any event, there's not much left to do, but there's some punchless things that Glenn's been involved in and will be involved in. I suggest just extending it to the end of August. I talked with Glenn about that. He thought that was appropriate. So, that's what 1820 does.
Stands it to the end of August, from the end of May to the end of August?
Right.
Where it was, okay. So, could I have a motion for...
I'll move.
Motion by Dottie for consideration of resolution number 1820. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion? Roll call vote.
Moore?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Casada?
Aye.
Herbals?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Carrie?
Steve, I see you have first consideration of ordinance number 227, prohibiting the use of vapors, electronic cigarettes. And before you talk about it, I have Susan Velita is here from Johnson County Public Health. Thank you for coming, Susan. And she, she listened to the web stream, so she knows there were some concerns or questions last time and...
Great. Thanks for having me. Yeah, Susan Velita from Johnson County Public Health. After watching the video of your last meeting, there were a few questions. So, I'm glad I could be here to kind of answer some of those, I hope. And then if you have more, please shoot them at me. First of all, to clear up, the use of any sort of, of the electronic smoking devices, vaporizers, Juul, what, all the different names that they go by, they are not covered by the Smoke Free Air Act in any way or any other state law in terms of their use in any places. This is why, frankly, folks like me have been talking to different local municipalities all across the state about your ability to pass ordinances if you so choose. Iowa City, North Liberty, Correville, Solon, Ames, Wright County, Wright County and Story County so far. And I know there's others happening as we speak. And this certainly isn't something new across the whole country as well. And it's in an effort to protect the indoor air quality and the health of the public. Johnson County Board of Supervisors are considering a county-wide ordinance. They have been. And they wanted some feedback from all the cities. So, that's kind of how this all started. So, I've been to all the different cities or had conversations with administrators or mayors or clerks at this point. So, while these electronic smoking devices might contain fewer chemicals, fewer than the 7,000 that we know are in regular cigarette smoke, they do contribute to indoor air pollution. They absolutely do. And that secondhand smoke, you know, thirdhand smoke, as we've kind of grown to understand about regular cigarettes, secondhand vaping or that breathing in of that particulate matter is happening. We do know that. It's not harmless water vapor, just to clear that up. The aerosol does contain heavy metals, other toxins, and cancer-causing agents. The other couple of things I want to mention here before I go ahead and have you ask me any other questions is keep in mind you can essentially smoke just about anything in these things. Just to throw that out there, so marijuana and other drugs. So, right now, I could legally smoke in here if I wanted to, I suppose, unless one of you told me I couldn't. I would respect that wish. But there's nothing stopping me from doing so. They're not an approved cessation device, just so that everyone understands that. And I think, lastly, the big thing that's very important to me in my tobacco prevention and control work is imagining a time now where our young people would see people in public places, smoking at restaurants, at bars, and workplaces. That just pushes, you know, the whole idea of smoking regulations back a lot of years, right? I remember folks smoking on an airplane when I was a kid. And I don't think that's the environment that most cities want their younger citizens growing up in. So, this is why we've kind of been talking about this issue around the state and especially here locally.
Are there any questions for Susan? You answered everyone's question, Susan. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have first consideration of ordinance number 227, prohibiting use of vapors, electronic cigarettes in public places where tobacco already may not be smoked pursuant to Iowa Smoke Free Air Act. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, motion by Dottie is...
I'll second it.
And second by Lisa. Further discussion?
So, what public spaces, Triangle Park would be one and any other green spaces, right? And then, of course, City Hall?
No.
Or where does this apply?
No.
Well, it applies...
Public spaces under the act.
It's...
As the ordinance was written, all places where you can't smoke regular cigarettes. If you want to extend it to outdoor green spaces, that's a wonderful idea and also something I work on.
Well, I'm thinking of fire prevention down the road.
Yeah, that's another benefit.
Right, okay.
So, like Maggie's or in here or...
Stella.
Right. Or other workplaces.
Workplaces, yeah. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Maher?
Aye.
Casada?
Aye.
Herbals?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Carrie?
Thank you. Thanks again, Susan, for coming. Then we have consideration of resolution 1821 establishing the amount of fees for certificates of structure compliance and rental permits pursuant to the city's Rental Housing Code Ordinance number 110 as amended. Steve, did you want to say a little bit about that or?
Not much, not much to say. Chris Anderson, Virginia Miller, Stan Loberman and I met to discuss rental permit application details and the rental brochure and a couple of other documents to make sure that we capture what's set forth in the amended ordinances. And as a part of that, we discussed and made the recommendation that's set forth in 1821 concerning a certificate of structure compliance, which is a one-time certificate. So, given the cap, probably not likely that we're going to have many, if any, of those anyway. But $80, that's a one-time application or fee. The rental permit fee is $150 annually. And then the late fee is $75. That's the recommendation.
Okay, could we have a motion on the table?
I motion to adopt.
Okay, motion by Sylvia. Second by Dottie. Further discussion, it's on the board here.
My only question is on the right to enter annually that Stan needed. I thought that was supposed to be a part of this also.
What does that mean? I was wondering, but that's a separate.
He mentioned that this is something that he needed.
That's a separate.
So maybe it's something we just need to take up next month.
Steve, is that, you know, right to enter annually, that's not part of this, correct?
No, I don't think so, because it's late fees.
Oh, you were talking about fees now?
Are we talking about fees? Yeah.
Virginia, I'll double check. I'm sorry.
She asked that question.
From our conversation, I think that's already in our ordinance, but I'll double check, and if not, I can put something together for next week's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Virginia, that is on the agenda.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
And is there any other discussion about it? Okay, roll call vote.
Casada?
Aye.
Herbl?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Carey?
And then, Virginia, you were asking about late fee charges for rental permits. Isn't that, was that something different?
Um, I think I just want to make an announcement on how this is going to be handled going forward.
Oh, okay.
Would you say that's correct, Chris?
I think that would be correct.
Yeah, so rental permits are going to be due on July 1st at $150. If you don't get your permit in on time, you will have until August 1st to get it in, but then you will also need to submit an extra $75 as a late fee. And on August 1st, if you either submit your rental permit without the late fee or you miss that date, you know, so if you're missing either the permit application or that extra late fee, you will not be issued a rental permit, period. And you will then lose your right to renew your rental permit for that property. If that happens, property owners can then appeal their case to the Board of Adjustment, but that's the process that's going to be followed this year. So it's really important that rental property owners are aware of that, that we are not going to be, there's not a big grace period. You've got one month to get it in, and that's it.
Virginia, well, everyone, I would recommend that if you're putting that in the hands of the Board of Adjustment, that we do a tutorial with them so they are firm in their understanding of what the expectation is.
That's a good idea. I believe that Stan and I will meet with them.
Yeah, right.
Okay, any questions for Virginia about that? So you have one month from July 1st to August 1st, but if it is on August 1st, it's a late fee? Okay, I got it. Thank you.
No, if it's, you have to have your permit in by July 1st to avoid that late fee. If it comes in during the month of July, you've already incurred the late fee. Permits are due on July 1st.
Oh, okay, you have until July 1st.
So all the materials will be mailed out at the beginning of June, so you'll have time to get those.
I see, okay.
Filled out and sent back in there.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Due July 1.
Due July 1. After that is the 150 plus 75 until.
And Virginia?
You forget to include your late fee, you're.
Incomplete.
Oh, yeah, Paul Moore has a question.
Go ahead.
When will the permits be mailed out?
When will the permits be mailed out, is what Paul's saying.
We're aiming for the beginning of June, but it's just been a real scramble since the moratorium went so late.
Wait, for June? Virginia, can you repeat that again?
We're aiming to get those out at the beginning of June.
The new permits?
Mm-hmm, the new permit applications.
Okay.
Because, well, they're not, sorry, they're not new, they're renewals.
Right.
With the caveat that there's additional information that needs to be formatted into these forms. So I am striving very hard, in fact, I worked 13 hours on this on Sunday, on these forms. But given the meeting that we had with Steve and the items that need to be added, there's going to be a great deal of formatting that needs to take place. So if I do not make that June 1st date, I will let everyone know.
Okay, thank you.
The deadlines will be moved accordingly.
And of course, you'll post that, you know, notice on the website, so people should rely on the city website for your final.
We will be communicating in a variety of ways.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Now we go to the clerk report. You again, Chris.
Me again. So to reiterate what Virginia stated, we are working very hard on the rental permit forms. I had hoped to have those to you, but again, the meeting that we had yesterday was, yeah, it was yesterday, with Steve, there are additional things, and it's causing me a lot of formatting issues. So I will keep you up to date, but we anticipate giving you all previews at the next meeting, which is May 15th. Do you want me to just go, keep going on to the other next items?
Yeah, could you do the Stella liquor? Yeah, keep going.
Okay. Stella has turned in their paperwork to the city as well as to the state. Everything is in accordance and in compliance, and I would appreciate you considering the renewal of their liquor license.
Chris, do we know what liquor licenses are going for for other cities?
That is determined by the state. I can find out an email.
Okay, thank you.
Do they all renew at the same time?
No.
No? Okay.
So Maggie's will be renewed in June?
Thank you. I want a motion that we renew Stella's liquor license.
I second.
Okay, motion by Virginia, second by Sylvia. Is there any discussion? Let's see, this is just a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, we're up here. Then could you talk about the history of the city audit?
Sure, I was hoping Lori would be here. So for those counselors who are new to this process, it used to be that every four years we held an audit automatically. That was changed for several reasons. There are some cities due to their population that are not required to have an audit, and there was also fraudulent behavior happening in cities. And so they changed it that if you had a budget, or, yeah, if you had a budget that was going to be over a million dollars two years in a row, that triggered having an audit. So we, as a city, will be having an audit for this fiscal year. Historically, the council has directed me to reach out for RFPs with a variety of individual CPAs, the state, getting prices. The RFP, the last time for the FY14 audit was conducted, and we had to have responses back in October. We did the field work in November, and then there was a report that was generated, I believe it was December slash January. The deadline for having this audit or examination done is March 31st of next year, so we have plenty of time. So I can only assume that the council would direct me to reach out to a variety of individuals. There is a list that Steve Poole usually provides. We also reach out to the state and get information from them.
Have you got any information yet?
I have a copy of a letter that was sent to Sylvia. I got that today from the state. They are coming in for an examination without the filing fee of $175 at $4,245. Historically, we have used Cronlogi and Associates, I believe they're out of Charles City. Past two audits that I've been involved, we have used them because they're the only ones who have responded back to our RFP. They know our systems, they know how we operate. We went from a three to four day audit, or, yeah, it wasn't audit, my first year, to a one and a half day examination because we were very well-prepared. Now, as with any auditors, they will throw you a curveball because that's what auditors do, but we know what to do, we know what is necessary. Lori and I have it down. I will let you know that I take vacation for this period of time, so I'm with them on site the entire time for the field work.
Wow. And how much was Cronlogi?
They were.
The last time?
They were $3,800 for the FY14 audit. They had estimated that it would be three days of field work, and we had it down to one and a half days.
So it was less, actually.
It was less time because we were, like I said, very well-prepared.
Chris, I'd like to work with you on the, partner up on the RFP process, since I've started some of the financial, I reported on this, I think in the February finance report, because it was a big issue that, you know, Jim made sure that I was aware that there is a audit coming down the pike. We have more money, and the state audit is very, the state audit department is most active recently with a lot of the activity that has been detected in other small to mid-sized towns throughout Iowa. So I would be happy to work with you through the RFP process and making a recommendation of a short list to council.
So I would ask that we make a determination if we are going with the state or the smaller firm, because I do have a letter that I need to return back to them of what our intention is. I can put both if we are still in this process. Again, it's out the council's directive of what I do, so I think that's all to you to decide.
So could you say what you need today? Could you spell it out a little more for council?
I need to respond back that either the Office of Auditor of the State will perform an annual examination, or we have not made a decision, we would like a representative of your office to contact us, or thank you, but we know who we will be contacting, which is a private CPA firm, or we plan on having a financial audit in lieu of the annual examination. I will say that when I talked to the state today about prices, they did say that for an audit, that would be a two-week process, and could be anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 for that.
Because if it's a two-week process, that's like two weeks of your time, right?
I would be taking vacation. Anytime that I work here on regular business hours for my regular job, I take that as vacation.
So I guess I wonder if Lori has anything to add, as long as she's worked with you, would she be able to cover?
I think that would be a disadvantage to Lori. We both work on this together. So they are asking for a variety of issues, and it's worked very well because Lori and I know what they need, and we have it prepared. Again, as I stated before, they will throw you curve. I deal with audits at the university all the time, that's what my regular job is about. So I will do whatever the council directs, but we truly had a great system last time. We had it very well organized. Like I said, we cut the time in half and saved the city money.
I would recommend that we allow Chris and Lori to conduct it in the manner in which they conducted it last time, as long as it seems to be expedient in terms of cost as well as time.
Well, and then the other comment, I think, I think the call to action that Chris is asking is how to respond to this letter. And I think, I think it would be fair, since RFPs have not gone out and negotiations haven't been made about how this audit is to be taken or not taken, I think the best answer for that letter is to say, we're still thinking about it, please contact us later. That way, we don't rule out an agency that is the number, I mean, it is the governing agency, and the agency has been transforming most of its practices in the last three years because of all sorts of shenanigans across Iowa. I think if we have this agency once in a blue moon show up at our city and take a look at our processes, and of course, we have to negotiate the length of time they're here and et cetera, I think it's wise for us to get a pretty, a good regulator to come out and tell you what they think of our books and practices.
This $4,000 number from the state, that's just what they charge, whereas the $3,800 number, that includes all of our costs.
But that was in 2014.
So the $4,000 number would just be for examination.
That's just what we paid for them.
Right, without the filing fee.
And that doesn't include.
But the filing fee's only $175.
For your time and Lori's time with the city.
Correct, and they would also charge us for their incidental costs, so I'm assuming they would now be driving back and forth between here and Des Moines. So hotel, food, mileage, et cetera. We do pay, we have paid Cronlogi and Associates for their incidentals as well.
How much did we pay for them at the last exam in 2014?
I would have to defer to Lori on that for what we paid on the incidentals.
And see, that's what I'm saying, is that Cronlogi was here four years ago, and we don't know what their prices are as of tonight, so you really don't have a very good comparison. We may have some good ideas of, you know, what they're all about, but when it comes down to price, if that's what's going to be the most important bottom line, we don't know that. So I would suggest that this council respond to the state saying, we haven't made up our mind yet.
No, I agree with Dottie on this one.
What do you think, Lisa?
Well, how about if Cronlogi comes back more expensive, or comparable, or the same as?
I will say that Cronlogi is very thorough because in the last audit, which I argued against, they had missed an item in the previous audit, so it was their fault. And I told them that I didn't feel it was appropriate for us to have that documented in our audit. They agreed to disagree with me, so they are very thorough in what they do in examinations. Again, it is to make sure that we are following proper procedures as a city, segregation of duties, et cetera, proper filing, et cetera.
Sure, all of your controls.
And if it works, I mean, and it's worked before, I can't amend.
Well, we need to.
She needs direction, yeah.
And then.
Well, she needs, she's asking for direction. You want to make a motion?
I think it's premature.
I think that we need to explore first the group that we used before successfully.
So you want to explore the group? Cronlogi?
Uh-huh, and see what they come up with. If they, if there was no problem and it was successful, why try to fix something that isn't broken? That's my position.
Chris, are you going to still send out multiple RFPs to other, to the state?
I can, I usually get information from Steve Poole. There are not a lot of firms that will do audits for cities of our size because there's not a great margin for them. So the past two years, Cronlogi has been, who's responded to it, and this is what they specialize in, so they have a very good pattern.
Well, let's still try, we're getting bigger, maybe someone will bite.
And that's exactly it, Virginia, we're getting bigger, more dollars are coming in, controls are getting larger. I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to explore and have at the next council or the next one after that, a short list of selections. I think to cut out the state is premature. As a matter of fact, I'll call the state tomorrow and start saying, why can't you make this less than two weeks because of the following reasons?
Why don't we allow Chris to explore it as long as she has done it before? And she does this also full-time for the university, so.
Because she's working during the day.
So are you.
To volunteer on this.
Yeah, I would.
Chris, what is the deadline to get back to the state?
They want to have a response by May 16th. The other items I'd like to bring up while I'm thinking of them, if any of you have checks, we need to have those ASAP, those should be turned in timely to us and not held on to, especially as we are getting close to year end.
I mean, is it ever appropriate for counselors to be handling any money at all? I mean, should.
I would prefer that everything is directed to me.
The tree board be sent straight to.
It should be directed to me because, again, for separation of duties, I'm the one who does the deposit, Lori's the one who does the reconciliation, so we, you know, in theory, if we were embezzling, it would take two people to do it as opposed to one. For the record, we are not doing that, I just want everyone to know. But there needs to be the separation of duties, and we should have proper handling of the paperwork that goes with it.
So which one do you recommend we check, Chris? Which one works for getting some RFPs from?
My personal opinion, and I'm actually putting on my hat from my University of Iowa job, I would go with a private CPA firm, as we have done historically, I think they have served us well.
And you'll reach out to other firms?
I will reach out to Steve Poole to, I mean, this is historical, this is what council has directed us to do. In the two years that I've been through audits, Lori, I'm not even sure how many you've been through. I know Steve Poole actually used to be. Steve Poole used to be our auditor, and then because of regulation changes, he was unable to continue in that capacity.
Segregation.
We have had very good luck with the people who have audited us. I'm just going to say for those watching on TV, auditors will find something. They're always trying to improve something. So I don't expect anything big, I don't expect anything that's wrong, it's just continual fine-tuning of our processes.
And do you guys have all the documents that you need? Or is there more stuff that needs to be turned in?
I would say that if any of you have documentation for payments of bills, letters, things of that nature, we will need them. Historically, we reach out, again, let me back up a step, Lori and I work with the auditors. Lori goes back and forth between her job, I stay with the auditors full-time. As Steve can attest to, and if Josiah was here, we reach out to them for information to Louise as well. So if you have any of our bills that have been paid, if you're looking at anything, if you have any documentation, we will need that because Lori and I will take, it will take some time to get things in order. And to that point, Lori and I are unable to do audits or examinations, depending on what you decide upon in the summer. I have closing at the University of Iowa and will be busy up through September. I have closing at the University of Iowa and will be busy up through September. Lori, you're dealing with a lot of people. Turnover, new people coming in. Historically, we have done the audits later in the year, again, October, November, plenty of time to get the report back from the firm and get it turned into the state.
Yeah, I think that's quite timely, given that it's not actually due until March.
Okay, so is it agreeable to council to do a private company, and you'll reach out to?
I'll get RFPs.
Yes.
RFPs to many? And that's agreeable to Nick and Sylvia and Dottie?
Chris, because this is a finance issue that's of particular interest to me, can you please keep me apprised of to the, of to the developments of how big the pool of individuals this goes out to for the RFPs and what the feedback is? I still want to be involved. I think that's the responsible thing of the Chair of Finance to do, and it's irrespective of whether this council body wants to or not. I will, I do want to review information with you. So I can do that on my own motion or with the acknowledgement that that will happen from this body. So that's, that's where I stand on finance. I do want to just say that I appreciate the comments that historically, this has been the operation, this has been the practice, this has been the approach. But I also wanted to say that all of us got elected to make changes, and maybe one of those changes should be to have the, the body of government who overlooks all of these operations come in every so often to do an audit on, on our city. I think it's good practice, and I would be pressed to find that other cities don't do it at least once in a blue moon. Not regularly, but every so often to have a fresh set of eyes do the, do the auditing. Now, I understand that there are circumstantial reasons why that complicates perhaps having the city, but we don't know if that will change with Cron Legur in 2018. So I appreciate your hard work on this, and those are just my general comments.
I would also state that I will be happy to send all RFP information to all of the council or anyone who would like to have that information. And I request in turn that any copies of letters that go to you directly to any council member or to the mayor, I do need copies for the city records. So if you receive something from them, I need a copy. Thank you.
By the way, I had no idea they had mailed something. So I was waiting and waiting and waiting. So thank you.
And can we expect this to happen every year from now on?
If we go over a million dollars, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So you're going to contact everyone and keep them? Okay, thank you. Lori, did you have anything to add?
No.
Okay.
We have a lot of work ahead of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks like every year going forward.
And then Lori submitted the treasures report and the warrants. She sent them. Are there any objection to paying the bills? Hearing none, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent. And then we'll go to Police Chief Report. Hi, Nate.
How's it going?
Pretty good, thank you. I know you sent a written report.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to, I don't think I have anything to add besides the, to my written report. Any questions or?
I do. Where are we with the Marietta parking permits? I know that the cycle for the permit runs from, from what is it, July 1 to June the 30th, so.
Correct.
And I, and that's going to come up in the farmer's market discussion later on, that there are, these permits have some guidelines, and that the guidelines are pretty, pretty in need of, of review and updating. And for purposes of hosting the farmer's market, there's a sense of urgency around that, and I wanted to know what the status is.
So maybe, yeah, and my, I don't know if you had a chance to look at my report. Nate and I spent quite a bit of time talking about this, and the thought set forth in the report is generally that there, from Nate's observations, correct me if I'm wrong about anything I say, there are about 15 spots that are used for the permit parking out of 57 total spots. And then, and then aside from that, there's the Tower Park, the five that, that are reserved for that. So the thought would be to help free up some of those spots for daily use, for visitors, that sort of thing, people at OUP would be to limit the number of spots reserved for permit parking to 15. So that was kind of step one. And step two was potentially having it so that this, whether it's permit parking or the three-hour parking, that would not be allowed, and maybe Tower, I don't know about, about Tower Park or not, but on game days, having those not be applicable, that it would be game day parking that the, the city would sell spots. And so the, that would be a, a way to generate income and a way to make it a little less arbitrary, you know, in terms of who's able to utilize a somewhat valuable resource on game days. So that is generally what I've laid out. I've also thrown in there, I think, that could consider increasing the fee for the permit parking. I, I mean, it's, it's relatively low, but at the same time, you know, if, if people aren't using it that, I mean, I don't know. It's kind of a supply and demand thing, and I don't know fully where that lands. I, I was kind of wanting to hear what other people had to say on that.
Do you have any idea how many permits we sold last year?
Yeah, low 70s, 72, 74.
Okay.
And so, now, that number will go down, because we did have the issue of, as council saw with people buying permits for those that didn't live here and other issues like that. So by getting those numbers down, I think we, just a quick look through the list, I think there's probably 10 that were purchased that will no longer be eligible because they don't live here, so.
And they're, just from talking to people, there may be a little bit more interest in, I mean, in, in terms of people who didn't know about it. So just having, if it's going to be that inexpensive, maybe having a place where they could throw a car for a little while if they needed to. So I, that's where the.
15 spots for permit parking, and then the rest?
Then five for Tower Parks still.
Five for Tower Park.
And then the.
The rest is open to the public?
Would be three-hour parking, was the thought.
Thirty-seven spots would be three-hour parking. And then all 57 spots for maybe 52 minus the Tower Court parking?
I already said that.
Would be sold on game day by the city for parking only.
That, that was the idea, for parking only, yeah.
I think that's a cool idea.
It would be, and we'd want to maybe talk about the price. We could talk about that this week or next week.
The permit would exclude, would, you know.
Exclude those days, yep.
And I think you mentioned in your report, this wouldn't be tailgating?
Correct, just parking. And I, and I think Nate's feedback was, or maybe it was Virginia, I talked to a little bit about this, the idea that, you know, maybe it would be better to sell it by the year, just, and I don't know if Chris, I probably should check with Chris about what role she might want to play with this, if we're selling them through, you know, how we're going to be selling them, but obviously.
It's a hassle to sell them.
Yeah. If you do season, it's going to be fewer than if you're trying to, you know, coordinate all the different games. Forty dollars per game.
It'd be just too much work to do it game by game.
And the other, the other thing to add is just maybe the idea, if, if Steve doesn't see a problem with this, offering it to residents, you know, if they're interested, and if, if they don't buy them by a certain date, then open it up to the, to everybody else.
I agree with all that.
The only thing I would caution, and just to make sure, is that there's always a reservation to the city to change the terms and conditions of that document at any point in time, because we're, it's a really, yeah, that was a sore spot for the farmer's market this time around. And so I would caution that if you're going to do football game day, that's a really big reason why people would be furious if they didn't have their, you know, expected parking spot. But otherwise, would it be possible, Nick, and to get these guidelines adopted at May 15, council meeting, to add them so that we can send out early notice, about 40, 40-some days to, to the public or to the permit holders, letting them know, here are the, you know, here's the proposed new season of how parking is going to work? And then also, Nate, how does it work if you have three-hour parking and the city has, say, cleanup day on a Tuesday? How do we reserve the right to use that space? And do we just set up cones or?
Yeah, I mean, realistically, we have, if the city wanted to, I think we have signs that were purchased years ago that just say, the police parking, you know, during this date to this date, or this time, you know, this date in time to this date in time. If the city wanted me to, I can go put those up anywhere there's legal parking now, and nobody can park there. So I mean, it's the city preserves that right to limit that any time.
So how much does it cost to have meters installed? Because I think it would be a great idea if we use the football game day fees to start funding, say, meters. You know, I think that would make it a lot easier to visually know who's at three hours and who hasn't.
You know, one of the concerns that was brought up with that before was who would provide the maintenance on that? I mean, Iowa City has a lot of meters, but if they'd be willing to work on those, to what degree? Are we talking about coin meters only or with, I mean, there's meters now that will respond to your smartphone, and you can pay from wherever you're at up that time. Credit cards, I mean, it just kind of, there's such a wide variety, the price range there, I'm sure is corresponding with that.
I'm thinking a 28-8e agreement might help cover that maintenance, like.
Well, that's if they're interested.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah. If they have, their public works people have the time.
I mean, sometimes they're not interested in.
Right.
And too, you know, there's, there was a little bit of feedback about whether the appearance of meters in kind of this residential setting was aesthetically appropriate. I, I personally, I thought of meters also as an option, but didn't really, I guess, pursue that thought as much, partially based on that feedback, but also partially based on, I think the UHPD's saying that it was something they could, they could manageably enforce. But I, I agree. I think it's something to keep open as an option, you know, if it, especially if it becomes too tedious for you to be tracking that many spots.
Yeah, I mean, and the enforcement is obviously easier with the meters, because the meter is either red or it's not versus the, we have to see the car whenever it's parked there, then chalk the tire, it's three hours from that point. Maybe it was already, you know, it could be 3:20, 3 hours and 30 minutes, it could be exactly 3 hours. It's, you know, it's a much more arbitrary number.
If we're talking about meters, we need to think about around Stella's also.
That's tricky though, because there's still legal street parking, so unless you're going to meter the entire neighborhood, it just pushes people.
Yeah, and that's where there's a neighborhood, you know, on Golf View. Would you want meters in front of your house?
Well, I mean, the, the.
That's kind of the thought, I don't know.
The parking problem is so bad around Stella's that I think a few meters would not disturb the neighborhood ambiance at all.
And Marietta might be the place to try them if we're going to at some point, just because those spots do look a little bit more like they might have a meter, you know, in front of them as opposed to the, the ones in the neighborhood, and the point that it would push.
It's just going to.
Push people into the neighborhood if, yeah, a bunch of empty meter spots. You know, the other idea is that Nate and I talked a little bit about a while ago, is this is not a money generator, but they do sell meters where you, or there are meters where you push a button, you don't necessarily pay, and it just sets, you know, the clock for you. And then if you don't come back and push it again, then that's a problem, and that could leave, still leave, you know, the UHPD with the idea that if they see a car that's abusing that, if there's a rule that you can't reset the meter without moving or something like that, then it could be addressed that way.
I think we need, if we're going to have meters, we need to get money out of them and take the burden off the police.
I think more, more work could be done too, to see what the cost would be. I mean, maybe the football parking would cover, you know, the meters, if that's something that people are interested in or, you know.
I think, yeah, if we start off just by asking Iowa City, which would be, or maybe even Coralville?
With the university, I mean, I don't know. Do they have their own people for their?
Yeah, I mean, the university has the entire division, does nothing, nothing but parking in all those lots, so.
Steve, did you want to comment? I, I thought I heard you.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Steve. I had just thrown out whether there was an issue of, of saying, if we do this football parking thing, whether we, we can say we're opening up to residents before we open it up to everybody else, if that's some, if that's a problem.
I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
And I just wanted to add, aren't there more people that use their permits on football game day because they want to free up their forty-dollar a-car driveway or grass, and that they might use their permit parking over there?
Yeah, so football game days, there are landlords in town that will purchase spots for their tenants, or just residents who will buy spots as well, just for those seven game days, so that they can park cars over there, and that twenty dollars for the year is, you know, that, that's easily covered by parking one car for one game, and the rest is profit for them. I guess with this idea that, Nick, you know, at forty dollars, like Virginia had suggested, that, so that's, that's one car per game essentially with what the average rate probably is in town, that they're, you know, if they're going to park there, then they're sort of balancing.
I know, I'm just saying, does that, you don't have as many spaces available then? How do you know how many spaces? You got to have spaces for those people who buy the permit, correct?
No.
He's, he's taken that into account already.
He's taken it into account?
So, yeah, what he's saying is that there are 72 permits that are purchased, and a good proportion of those are just for game day, which I understand that that's the strategy. And I'm not criticizing anyone who's done that. I just think it's, it's kind of like the city is subsidizing, you know, them in a sense, to, to generate the profit in another way, so.
Okay, I'm glad you're taking it into, I just want to make sure you take it into consideration.
Yeah, and there's no guarantee, as Virginia requested a copy of it, I know Nick's seen a copy of the Marietta, the restrictions on the parking permit, and right at the top is, you know, there's no guarantee that by purchasing the permit that you get to park there. If the spots are full, the spots are full, and that's, that's just kind of the risk that you run, so.
I'm almost kind of, I, I don't know what the council thinks about the current fee for the permit being raised. Maybe since we're reducing the number and there's risk.
Game days, I would just leave the fee.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Well, and even the fee I would reconsider, because in the course of trying to figure out ways to amend the 2017 permit holder situation, so I'll give you some background. We right now have 50-some permit holders that are parking here during the week, and we have, what is it, a permit holding rules that went out sometime last summer. I don't know if they went through legal review. I presume not, because they're in a pretty interesting state that needs some attention. And so what happened is, I found out in the course of trying to amend these rules, so that it would give the city the right to host the farmer's market or any other community event on that, along that area, that the commuter parking ramp here by, what is it, by the golf course, is approximately about twenty-seven dollars per month in fees. So that's per month. And then, of course, reserved ramp at the hospital or in any other ramp is about a hundred dollars per month. So you're quickly talking about close to $300 for faraway commuter lots, and also about a thousand-plus dollars for reserved parking. So that's why I suggest, let's, you know, fund some of these more advanced meters that make enforcement easier. It looks to me like an easy self-funding line item. And that's the research I have. I don't know what other, what other cities may be doing with comparable parking spaces. But again, we're in a pretty unique situation close to the stadium.
Are there any other questions for Nate or for Nick?
I just want to confirm, Nick and Nate, that you guys are okay with bringing to the table revised guidelines or rules for the permit at the next meeting?
For the what?
Revised, revised rules for the permit holders beginning July 1, 2018.
Do, are there any revisions you want to see specifically in terms of the, you know, we're reducing the number of permits? Sounds like maybe leaving the price the same. They're going to have fewer permit spots. If, if you're thinking about like community events, if you have the three-hour spots, or even if the permit, you have permit spots, we, I mean, there's still authority, I think, for the city to hood them in a sense, and say, they're not, you know, they're not applicable right now. What changes are you looking for in terms of the?
Just the, the reserve, you know, what I'm typically accustomed to seeing in licenses is a reservation. You know, the credit card company, the bank, the insurance company reserves the right to change the terms. That would be one. We'll give you notice, but we don't need you to agree with those changes. We're just going to give it to you. The second one that I would think is disclosure, that if there is a community event that takes place along that area, that there permit, that the city event, because it's a community event, takes, takes priority over public space parking. And I think other cities do that already. You know, when you have parades, they clear off the metered parking along parade routes so that, you know, the community can come together.
Are you asking for email addresses on that form too?
We are not currently, no.
You might want to do that so that you can send out announcements.
Yeah.
If there are closures.
Yeah, the, the old form that was used only has an address and a phone number.
So to answer your question, it's just a very high-level reservations in favor of community? So I don't know, Virginia, how did you guys get spaces for the cleanup, cleanup day?
Nate marked them off the night before.
And just bumped off people?
We didn't have to move anybody.
Yeah. Nobody was parked there. We just marked it off.
Okay. So we've done it anyway. That's what I suspected, but I wasn't too sure.
I mean, I think it's one thing to.
Because it was a few, for a half a day, right? How many hours did we bump them off for the night before?
Nine to noon.
Yeah. Well, it was marked off the night before, so the day before, so they could deliver the, deliver everything. And then it was during the event.
So it was kind of like you can park over here or over here, but just not right here?
Yeah. They were at the George end of Marietta. So there was still parking down towards the sun.
So nobody was denied a parking spot?
Just the ones that got bumped off the spaces. Okay.
It's kind of like snow removal too, you know, they, if they, if you're not supposed to be parked there for over seventy-two hours.
Nobody was bumped off, right?
No, there was nobody.
They were just like, we don't want you to park right here. You can park here or here.
Oh, so they don't have a signed parking?
No.
No.
It's just somewhere along.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Nobody's bumped off.
No.
They just park wherever.
Hey, this is really thorough reporting from both you guys this month. I appreciate that. Do you want to talk about, about the canine issue or not at this time?
Um, so to move along, yeah, it's the.
I have nothing else. So you're.
Yeah, the other, yes.
It's all you.
So I think Dottie had touched on, we had talked a little bit about uniformity and maybe Dottie's working on these signs just through town. We had first meeting of the year, people talking about, you know, we had an email, I know, from, from a resident who said, I think two hours is too short in my area. If I have a guest over, you know, that's not a reasonable amount of time. I want three. So that might be something where, in talking with Nate, kind of, I think his approach would be everything could be three hours in town, except for Golf View and Lemer. Those might be good candidates for two hour. So just getting those, if, if there's, you know, kind of consensus on that, I can get with Dottie and see if there's, you know, what needs to be done to get that done.
We're, we're looking at the signage throughout the city to see if it needs to be changed. So we're already doing that.
And then with another thing Dottie had mentioned that's in the report is the, the trailer, a new trailer is around six thousand sixty-five hundred dollars. The other opportunity that we have is to help fix up one with that West Branson Jones, and then we'd be able to share it with them. I'm kind of hearing maybe today there'd be a little bit of a preference to have our own and to really put it to use. So that would be, I guess the question is whether that's in the budget, you know, right now, somewhere we could, we could find sixty-five hundred dollars in the budget to buy a new one now?
That would be half of our surplus. That would be half of the surplus.
For public safety, public safety would certainly, you know, I think carry the day.
Yeah.
You got actual figures on that?
Yeah. I've got three different quotes from the three major companies that provide them. The large, they're the highest being over eight thousand and the lowest being closer to what Nick said, the six thousand sixty-five hundred. Um, the, I mean, it's, it's, the speed trailer itself is about five thousand, but if we're going to keep it deployed in the town for a longer amount of time, um, the battery lasts, depending on the traffic volume on Melrose, that battery is probably only going to last about twelve hours and then it's going to have to come back here and be charged. So it's about a six to eight hundred dollar upgrade to put the solar panels on it. But to have a solar panel on top, it should never, except for when we don't want it to be out, when it's, you know, the winter time or it's just not feasible. It can be out in the community twenty-four seven without ever needing to be recharged because that battery, battery is trickle charged by the solar panel.
Nice.
So, and it'll also, any of those three will provide, it'll come with a computer program. I can take a laptop, plug it in and tell it to, from this, from right now until whenever this date to this date, these, these certain times or twenty-four hour period, and it'll give feedback on vehicle speeds, what the, the average speed is, the, it'll automatically, it'll give all that information hour by hour, what the top speed was, all those things. So it, it gives a lot of data that comes with that, the number of cars that it tracked.
I want to make a motion that you get that.
Yeah.
Second?
Yeah. And, and you're talking the one with the solar and the.
Yeah.
I think that's for six hundred dollars.
If I may also add as treasurer for the junk, for the, what is our town? University Heights Community Fund, wherever I am, too many jobs, I would encourage you highly to apply for a grant, perhaps around a thousand dollars to assist on this matter.
Great idea.
I can do that.
Oh, very good.
So do we need, I mean, I'm hearing consensus. I don't know if we need a motion. It's like something.
So you had a motion by Virginia and a second by Nick. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Okay. Motion's carried. So, yeah, and you're going to apply for a grant too. That'd be a good thing.
Yeah, we'll apply for the grant and we'll just, whatever one of the three quotes.
You're good at writing grants, Nate.
I've done it. Uh, yeah. So whichever one is the lowest quote that provides all the things that we just mentioned, we'll go with that. So.
There's also that safety grant.
Right. Yep.
All right. Well, I did a written report because I, I'm really trying to not take as long in terms of my, my portion of things. But I did, I just wanted to talk a little bit more about UHPD next steps, that section, section six. So not trying to make Nate uncomfortable sitting next to me, but I think it's, it's, we're kind of getting to the point where I think it'd be good to get the chief position filled. You know, everybody I think wants a little stability. And I think it would also help, you know, to just be able to, to run things more efficiently to know that, you know, if we're looking, potentially filling another spot at some point, I think it helps with outreach to, to have a, a stable, you know, department in terms of, of the position. I've laid out in number six, a little bit about my vision in terms of how I would see this going ideally. It's not necessarily that I feel strongly about everything. I'm just trying to paint a picture to get the discussion going at least. And in general, I'm, first of all, in terms of the chief position, you know, I think that it would be good to hear maybe from Lisa, for example, that, you know, who was involved with the last hiring process interviews, to know if it's something that we need to open back up to everybody. I, I'm hearing that it would be good to just kind of consider Nate's application to be appointed. I'd like to, if, if that's something that people are interested in doing, I'd like to be able to take the, the steps necessary to do that at the next meeting, the June meeting.
Well, Nick.
Yeah.
I was on the selection committee.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Yeah. What are your thoughts?
And I would not want to repeat the extensive selection that we went through before. I don't think it's time or cost effective to do it. I think we have an officer here who is stellar, in my opinion, and I've worked with police for a long, long time. So I would recommend, like you are, that we ask all the council to meet with him and talk with them to see if they have any concerns. And then that if everyone is on board, that we appoint him as the new police chief.
Sounds good. Lisa, did you have any, you were involved with the last?
I'm just nodding.
Notting and agreeing. And, and I know some people have already met with Nate possibly, but I would suggest if, if you wouldn't mind taking the initiative to set it up with him. I know it, it might be more respectful of his time if people want to meet two at a time, but I don't think that's a hundred percent necessary, kind of your call, but that's just an idea. And so that I think, you know, is, is kind of the next, just a few more things to mention quickly. Sorry, I want to move on. But I, I think important in terms of, of the hiring process too, one thing that I considered is how I see the future chief role being different, if at all, from the past. One thing I think, and maybe this has been common when there's, there's been a chief and not an interim chief, but giving them a little more authority to just, to, to spend within their budget, you know. So I think we do want to put a lot of thought and continue to do, put, to put a lot of thought into the budget. And then, you know, once we do that, give the chief some discretion to set pay based on how, how he's seeing officers handle themselves, you know, to, to use some discretion in terms of what he spends money that's allocated already on specifically without coming to council. Right now, our process is to pretty much come to council or at least check in with the mayor if it's going to be over a hundred dollars. And, and maybe that's what the council wants to continue doing. I'm just throwing out another option. And then also in talking with Nate, we've talked quite a bit about the canine unit and, and the benefits that might have for our town. As some of the big ones being obviously the enforcement that can be done and the deterrent effect that can have to have a canine unit, but also it seems to be a, a cost effective way to kind of play our fair, you know, fair share in terms of the overall community, Coralville, Iowa City, you know, being able to offer something that is in need right now. My understanding is that when you need a canine unit, there, it's often the case that the delay in getting a canine unit makes the need no longer a need because you, because of current law. So that's something that I think, you know, would, because of the grants that Nate's told me about, could be, you know, a really good deal all, all around. So.
Would the doggy live with Nate?
Correct. Yeah. And the goal would be, as Nick said.
No, at your house, Dottie.
Yeah, with the grants.
No, it's really important that the officer bond with the dog.
And as Nick said, the, the goal is with some grants that are out there now that, that would be the dog itself and the training would be paid for completely with the grants. So it would be a very little, if any, cost to the city.
I did have two comments to make. One was, Nate, this is not generally directed at you, but more of a policy question. In the past, starting, I can't, maybe two chiefs ago, we had a situation where we developed a forty-hour administrative position out of a police officer's job description. And that caused a great deal of commentary and generated commentary from many, many residents, many of whom do support the UHPD very strongly. What I would like to know is that well within the budget expenditures that have been allocated, I'd like to have better visibility as to exactly what administration time is being used by the chief because even with Ron Fort in his years, there's, I think he would, it would be fair to say that his assessment of administrative work generated by the department does not amount to forty hours a week. And so that's one of the big concerns I have is to make sure that resources are deployed in all the right areas that need, that need addressed. And I, I think we need a chief out in the, out in the community. And so that would be one. And then the second one is, I was intrigued by the canine unit circumstances. Can you give me a scenario of how that applies, when it's applied or?
That could be applied in a lot of different ways with the younger people in the community. And Horn Elementary, if the council's aware or not, is one of the schools in the Iowa City School District that has a lot of the behavioral kids that go there. They, we've had several instances of them running away. And while Iowa City's great for coming to help, their dogs are generally on more of the late night shifts when they have more of the problems there. Whether it be a missing person or just in that case, trying to find someone and with Oakdale so close, the search and rescue side of it, that would offer that as well as, as Nick said, the deterrence of whether on a traffic stop, complaints, you know, in any of these buildings, the hotel of narcotics use or just the hotel wanting to keep that out of there, being a more high-end facility.
You only have so much time if you want to use.
Correct. So.
Hold someone indefinitely.
Yeah. Then the United States Supreme Court has said it's, you cannot extend the length of a traffic stop from my contact with you beyond what is reasonable to address why I stopped you. So if I stop you for speeding and I have even prior knowledge that there may be drugs in the car, I have whatever amount of time it would take me on average to complete the speeding ticket or warning and release you. If the dog is not there in that amount of time, we still have to go forward with the, letting you go on down the road with whatever you may or may not have in the vehicle versus having the dog more readily available is, and again, we run into that a lot and on this side of town with Iowa City deploys their resources where they have more issues than, quite frankly, that's, that's really not the west side of town in general. So our wait times are generally longer than what they, what we're allowed to work within. So.
Are there liability issues? A lot of them? Have you looked into that? I mean, I say that because, you know, I watch these court shows and they have dog bites and, you know, some kid, I don't know what.
Right. That's, I would address that in, as a policy issue. It would be at this time without having, I have not read Iowa City's full policy on it, but in general, I would follow their policy on when they deploy the dog in those situations, which in general is in felony cases and when, you know, if a weapon was displayed, the dog is used rather than, yes, for animal lovers, it is, it is a dog, but it's also a tool in, in the sense of law enforcement that it's there to protect the officers just as much as anything else. So, and it's, on the use of force scale for law enforcement, it's on the same level as what the taser is. So it's, it's right there, just one step above. So it's still considered obviously less lethal as an option as opposed to anything else. So just one more step or one more, something else that we can go to, to.
How much do the canine units cost? I know that handicapped, you know, dogs for special need individuals are pretty pricey.
Yeah. So it depends on, yeah, it depends on, there's a couple of different providers that we've looked into. It's anywhere from sixty-five hundred to seven thousand on the low end, up to ten or twelve. If we stay within the state of Iowa, it's a little bit more expensive versus some of the bigger, I guess, they turn out more dog, kind of the, the more they sell, the cheaper they are. So.
Hopefully not a puppy mill.
Right.
I don't support.
Yeah. They're all, they're all imported from overseas. So.
Oh, are they?
Yeah. Most, almost all of them are.
Any other questions for Nate and Nick?
No, thank you, Nate and Nick. Super informative.
Thank you so much. We'll go on to building zoning and sanitation.
Thank you.
Virginia, thanks.
I'll start off with just a couple of announcements. Tomorrow, May ninth, is the bike rodeo at Horn School, and our police are going to represent the city and the police department over there. And so thank you very much for volunteering to go to that. Bike to Work Week is next week. And so on May fourteenth is the bike, car, bus race. And I will be the bike with an assist from Jane, my daughter. On May sixteenth, here at the city office at six thirty AM is the Bike to Work Week breakfast sponsored by Jeff Spikenski. Six thirty to roughly nine thirty AM. So come on here for breakfast if you're on your way to work that day. And then May eighteenth is going to be a University Heights Slow Roll. We're going to start and end here. We're going to talk about commuter routes to get to downtown. We're going to head out around six o'clock, make a loop, and then end back here with some pizza from Maggie's Farm. So thanks to Jeff Spikenski for the sponsorship and to Maggie's Farm Pizza for the sponsorship on those. Um, one, another announcement I want to call out in my report is that we are going to start enforcing the current regulations in the rear of Olive Court starting July first, because there's been a lot of extra parking back there that's not supposed to be happening. I imagine most of that is going to go away on its own with the elimination of the commercial parking as a part of our rental housing code. So if there's anyone who's got extra parking back there or wants to check out to make sure they're in compliance, they can call Stan Laverman and have him come check for compliance before July first so that they're not in any trouble after that date. So moving on to my agenda items, we are going to skip this right to enter on annual systemic inspection. Cause I was under the impression that was going to be included in the late fee changes, and I'm not sure if there's any action needed there. So we'll double check that and come back to it in June if there is. And then I want to have a discussion about a community events committee because I don't want to have to organize the garage sale. And I would like to get an ad hoc committee of community volunteers to organize themselves and start taking on some of this work.
I think that's a good idea. I've heard of other ideas, you know, in terms of events that a group of people want to put together, you know, whether it be block party or, you know, Christmas lights on Melrose or whatever the case may be. How do you see this operating? If someone is interested in, you know, doing something like that, can you tell me a little bit more about how that would work?
I would like community volunteers to, you know, maybe they can start out by sending their name to Louise or to me to get organized initially. And from there, they just run it themselves. They don't get a budget. I don't think we need to assign people to terms and I don't think we need to be limited to a set number of people. I imagine the committee will sort of come and go per event, but there are some people who are going to be interested in the garage sale. There are going to be some people who are interested in picnic, some people that are interested in some sort of music thing. And let's let them take care of themselves. Choose a tear person if they see need be. And then if they need budget for something, they'll have to come to council to ask for that.
Do you, so because of how our budget usually works, are we, we're just, we would just be finding money where we can? Or is this something that you think we would start allocating for?
Well, let me just jump in and tell you that a little bit further down in finance is the third reading of ordinance two fourteen, which is, you know, has been going through a review process already done by this other council. And I think it addresses all those issues. It would work with a, a, a leadership team and that team would do exactly what you've just suggested. Roll out the activities, I would imagine, to the public and ask the public to rally for, you know, subcommittee work essentially is what it's rolling out to. And because that is consistent with many of the planks that many of you ran on this past season to build community and to make the city more green, livable and walkable and build more, you know, residential roots. There's also budget allotted to it because you can't make anything happen if you are struggling with budget. And we've seen that this council struggles with, you know, we had to cut the tree board, we cut the farmer's market. And at the end of the day, you can't.
What is the budget for?
It's six hundred dollars. And that's just seed money. You know, that doesn't preclude this group of leaders to go out on the city's behalf and provide, you know, go look for corporate sponsorship. The nice thing about ordinance two twenty, two fourteen is that it'll, it also allows this council to receive a, a general idea or itemization of what activities are planned. What are they thinking about? Is the farmer's market still a good idea now that the athletic club is moving away? Is lights and what is it? The luminary, you know, still a good idea or can it be enhanced or can, what else can be changed? Because I agree with you. It's a lot of work that goes behind the scene. No one really sees all the amount of time and personal sweat equity that goes into it, but it's pretty. of time and personal sweat equity that goes into it, but it's pretty rewarding when you see people coming together and promoting arts, culture and community. So, um, I, I hope you had an opportunity.
I just don't see a need at this time for the, for like a set number of people in term.
Well, that was the same thing with the board.
But I imagine that we could level up to that at some point if we found that we couldn't get enough commitment from people.
Well, I think, well, we haven't, well, you know, the tree board started off with that commentary. You know, tree board, no one had any faith in it initially. They thought it was just another organization to be put into place and you were, you were the big advocate for it. And because I've been through farmer's market luminaries, volunteering in other, in other capacities, I think the time is right to have an arts, culture and commission now especially that we have this public space here. So for example, the very first time, we had a movie in here with, I can't remember what famous resident we have whose life, Dottie, Dottie something.
Dottie Ray.
Dottie Ray's, um, histor-
Oh, Dottie Ray.
Yeah, documentary. So, but you know, it didn't get a whole lot of publicity because it was a one person. And I've got to tell you, is the farmer's market coordinates a lot of work. I'd rather have passionate residents that just want to do the farmer's market and take it over. And if they want, and I know right now that there are people who would consider a commission assignment and they can get released at any point in time that they want.
I think you could have the same effect with what Virginia is proposing and it would bring in more people. And we've done this in the past. We've had block parties, the individuals organized. We had the steel band, which the budget wouldn't cover the steel band. We did that ourselves.
So Virginia can-
It's just kind of a fun thing for people to do. You would involve more people. They could do what they want and it wouldn't be a term, a commission, minutes, meetings. I think you would get more involvement.
Um, well, my concern is, is, is this just for segmented areas of the city? Because the advantage to a commission is the responsibilities for the whole city. And right now I can tell you that there are some segments of the city that are more active as a little area or quadrant of the city than they are citywide. So while I appreciate Lisa's comments about the steel band, things like that, it, it doesn't necessarily pull everybody together. And that's my only concern that as a city, we should be promoting citywide, um, activities. And, and that, I think that's about the only safety that you have with a commission.
Virginia, do you see if, in response to that concern, do you see that if, if there would be some obligation if someone has an ad hoc committee on something that it would be, um, needing, needing to be open to the entire community or benefit the entire community? Or is there anything in relation to that, that point?
I mean, I think anybody would be free to join the group and then would have to sell their ideas to the group. And so this is their decision, not mine.
So they would eventually come to the city council if they need funding?
Mm-hmm. Or to make announcements of what they're doing, but I don't really think we need approval outside of specific things like sound, you know, if they're, if what they're doing needs a road shut down for an afternoon or a sound permit, like, these are things that require approval. But there's a lot of things outside of that scope that don't, like, I don't know what kind of approval would be necessary for the garage sale.
Well, I, my suggestion is maybe we table this tonight and talk about it next month again. Because-
But then we're past, I mean, I just, I need something quickly here.
Yeah. Cause it's June 2nd.
So you want to decide tonight?
I would like to, yeah.
I see.
Like, can we, can we just allow a community events committee to-
Well, how about if we just, do you need help right now for the garage sale? Like, see, I don't mind the tabling because here's one issue that I'm thinking about. Do we want just groups of, of citizens to just go out and start using the name on behalf of University Heights? And, you know, I, I-
I don't think that's what she's proposing.
No, no, but that's, those are some of the unintended, um,
I think-
actions that you need to consider.
I like what Virginia is proposing. I think that's a nice thing that would involve people doing what they want to do without having to be a commission, minutes, meetings.
Well, my-
And people will come together and-
My, my only concern is how do we organize this?
Right.
How do we disseminate?
I mean, I think we ask them to organize themselves and come up with their own rules.
But then how do they disseminate? You see what I mean? What's, what's the control mechanism? Are they going to use the city website? Are they going to go around and knock on doors or solicit or?
How are they going to handle cash? You know, I'm thinking, I'm like, we, we just said they might need a budget.
So you want to decide something tonight?
Yeah. I said they would have to come to the council.
I guess in just, sorry, in just a little further discussion, I kind of, I, I, I guess I'm kind of interested in, in getting Virginia's idea going with maybe the potential that it would, would morph into something else. The, the reason why I kind of like this just from hearing about it now is, um, I have heard of people who have one interest, you know, that they want, they would like to do one certain event, but I don't see that, that sort of person wanting to, or not that sort of person, the person, the people that I've talked to, I don't see them wanting to sit on a regular, you know, a board that meets regularly. I see them wanting to kind of gear up for one event.
Yeah. I can, I, I agree with that. I just think it, it'll be difficult to organize this sort of action-
Right.
And then disseminate it to everybody so everyone feels included.
Right.
I don't think so.
And that's where the-
I've done that before.
But how, how, how do you get the word out to, you know, if-
You organize it, you come to the council, that's the sort of thing that you would announce.
But, but I mean, out of the, it just, it isn't just going to come down from the heavens, is it?
No. Never is. It always is because of volunteers.
You know what I mean? How can you say, do you want to help with this? You know? How do you get that out? That's my question.
I just think it needs a central point just so you can do that rollout. It doesn't mean that you, you're not calling on people to come and take up a project and roll it out. It just means you need some centralization, organize, organization.
I, I don't, I don't want a commission per se.
Are you su-
I think I-
Are you suggesting like maybe this committee could start out with the garage sale?
Yes.
People interested in the garage sale?
Basically.
Come together and, uh, organize that. And that's kind of the starting point.
And there they decide next to how many more people they need to recruit to do whatever they want to do.
But so to be clear, is it like, some people could do that and then some other, another group might say, I want to do this other event. And then that would be, they'd be able to maybe get in touch with Lisa about getting it on the website or get in touch with, you know?
So any groups throughout, so is that right? So any groups, you can have any groups, like, you can have the farmer's market group volunteers farming effective tonight?
I wouldn't have a problem with that. I mean-
No, but I'm asking if that's the way it would work. And the luminary group, because there are some people who do like the luminary. They've got kids who come and visit during, you know, Christmas time and they stay over, uh, through the holidays.
I think it'd be great to have a luminary group.
Well, why don't we try, why don't we try at Virginia's way and just see how inclusive that is and whether the communications can, you know, I'm just worried about the communication network.
Let whoever knows, because I'm worried about, yeah. Whoever shows up know that they are charged with being inclusive and communicative.
And so is that agreeable with the council to try that?
Chris has, Chris would like to say-
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I may, we have talked about having a distribution list in the city for some time. I think the entire time I've been clerk and on council. And this might be an opportunity since we are trying to provide more information, not only rental program, but on the website, that we reach out to people. I don't mind creating the distribution list. I can be the, the owner of it. And as things need to happen or information needs to be disseminated, I can send out a very simple email and people just sign up. And if they want to participate, great. And if they don't, that's fine. But information is going out.
I think a city office distribution note is, is a good neutral sender. Yeah.
And I like the idea of, you, you, you have some resources at your disposal. If you would like to get a group together to do something, but you also have some responsibilities if you're using the city resources.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it seems like that's council consensus and you're going to distribute.
Yeah. Can we, can we work on some guidelines on how to use that city distribution? Chris, would you just prepare some?
We don't need guidelines, Sylvia, I don't think. Why don't we, why don't we start with her, why don't we just start with her simplistic suggestion and then see what we need to do to tweak that?
Oh, I don't think it was simplistic. I thought it was a good idea. Um, all right.
Okay. Then you want to talk about-
So here's, yeah. So here's a place where we need some guidelines. Airbnbs, Sylvia tried to bring this up a couple of years ago. At that time, I don't believe we had any Airbnbs in town. And we also didn't have a hotel tax. We now have maybe four or five in operation, two of which are houses that are not owner occupied. They are occupied exclusively as Airbnb and BnBs and short-term rentals. Um, the other ones are owner occupied from what I can tell and they just take on a renter from time to time. So I want to know if we're happy this way or if we want to put some regulations in here, if we want to have these properties be inspected by our housing inspector for safety. Um, and one suggestion I have, and we don't have to go with this suggestion, is that Coralville allows Airbnb's as long as the owner is on premise the whole time. So this would be the situation that some of our homeowners are in, that you stay, you're at your house and you allow someone to come stay with you. Um, this would prohibit those two houses that are used exclusively as Airbnb's and the owners are not in the city even.
Where are the owners at?
How would you check, Virginia? Who will monitor to see if the resident is there? You know, so that, you know what I'm saying?
I mean, I think, I don't know.
It's complaint driven.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's, we've got to be sure. And I-
Yeah. This would, so if we are going to do some sort of regulation, do we want people who are owner occupied to get a permit? Um, do we want them to undergo inspection before they're allowed to operate as an Airbnb? Um, and I think certainly we probably want them to be paying into the hotel tax.
No. And, well, I think, you don't think a hotel tax? Cause I think it should be, did you?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, okay. Um, and I think they need to be inspected just like any other residence so that they're safe and there are no health issues.
I think the only, yeah, I agree with all that. I, in terms of the owner occupied, um, I don't know if, where I'm at in terms of whether the, the owner actually has to be there the entire time. I guess I was looking more at maybe the owner living there and not renting it out a majority of the year or something like that, some percentage. That's just an idea. Um, you know, so that-
Yeah. So that would be a more flexible use, that it is an owner occupied house, but they do vacate for the entire weekend or whatever.
That's what I wanted to ask. Yeah.
Right. Cause I, I don't know that I want to, I mean, I don't know if we need to encourage people to cohabitate with people they don't know. Yeah. I, I don't know that that policy-
Just pop an eye on like what's, you know, if you're renting-
Yeah.
And it's in your house.
That's true. I guess, I guess the safety issues, the safety issues on their end, I just get concerned about, you know?
We had one down the street for a while and I didn't know what was going on down there. And it's like, why is this happening? And then it was not owner occupied. It was just being rented and I wouldn't support that.
Yeah. And I do, I mean, I do think we want to have, offer some flexibility for people to use their property in a way that suits them and helps with housing affordability in some regard too.
Either the owner's there the entire time or they-
It is an owner occupied house, but they are not required to be on premise. That's-
And, and it maybe, I mean, maybe it'd be an or you could, you could-
So what's the consensus?
Well, can I just, let me throw out two options. One is the owner would be on premises the entire time, generally living there. The other would be, um, it's owner occupied and they can only rent it out or, you know, have, have people staying there, uh, under those terms for a, a certain percentage of the year, whether that's 10% or 5% or 50%. The downside I see is, is what Lisa just pointed out, that even if they're gone for only a few weekends, those might be weekends where things get out of control. Um, the upside would be you're not necessarily forcing people to cohabitate with the, you know, the, the guests and generally they're owner occupied, just aside from a few short, um, absences.
Yeah. And I don't know that we're going to know if the owner's on premise or not.
Yeah. See, and, and who's going to monitor that? Because that's-
Well, it's not something we're going to be like-
Yeah, yeah.
Knocking on doors to check.
And if, if they rent it, then, you know, they should be pretty comfortable with the person they rent it to.
That's right.
Or, you know, be able to be there and live there while the person's there.
And not only, I mean, we're forgetting also that you have nuisance laws. They have to apply to everyone, Airbnb or not. So-
And that's what Nate just raised also.
Nuisance laws are, are there. I favor flexibility.
So you'd be in favor of owner can vacate?
I'd like the owner-
If you want to have a-
Yeah.
So what's the cap on how much a owner can rent out their house versus living in their house?
What's the, what are we calling the short term? What did the ordinance that you look at call short-term leasing? I mean, Airbnb stays, what, what do they define as an Airbnb stay versus a full-time rental?
Less than 30 days.
Well, you're talking about like-
Less than 30 days. Chris says less than 30 days.
And somebody else is here 2 days. I mean, that's pretty-
Well, doesn't council feel you need some public input on this too?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So then the other question on public input, now that we're talking about that is Virginia. North Liberty also passed an Airbnb provision, which is what Caroline Christensen showed up in 2016, uh, telling council, here's, here's some action to take. Did you get an opportunity to see what they're, what they're about?
No.
Okay. So I just wanted to throw that one out. It's North Liberty?
Is there a specific part of that that's interesting to you?
Um, I don't know, but maybe the air, the occupancy and the, you know, how frequently you can flip, uh, new, new guests, which I think is Lisa's concern.
So you're concerned with the definite, like the definition of a short-term one?
I think what I've heard some residents, especially on Prospect and Gulfview, is that there is changes in those properties. And I think that needs to be balanced out against the interests of the property owner. So I'd be interested in seeing how other cities have tried to get to the, you know, strike the right balance with that.
Is there any interest in allowing a non-owner occupied property to continue?
To be an Airbnb?
Yeah.
Mm-mm. No. I wouldn't support it. It looks like you got consensus on that.
Correct.
Well, does that give some starting information?
Yeah.
I think that would-
I'll go back to something on that.
Undermine our, the rental, um, permit work we've done this year too, if you could just-
Great.
No, it's an Airbnb.
Yeah, an Airbnb. Okay. So, uh, you're finished now with it?
I'm finished. Thank you.
Okay. And then we'll go down to Sylvia here.
Mm-hmm. Yep. I wanted to start off with a, an announcement that the farmer's market is slated for starting the end of this, the, the 29th of May. Um, the hours are from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. with start time for the vendors at 4:00. Um, we have a couple of details to take care, uh, from the council tonight that we need to resolve, but there are some options and I'll work into that one, uh, once we get that, uh, topic out of the way. Um, the 2018 city audit resources, we already discussed that with Chris at length, so I will go ahead and skip over that. And the, um, third consideration of ordinance 214, which is the Arts, Culture and Recreation Commission, I think the consensus tonight was to try an informal quasi-group. And I'm, I'm all for that, especially to test it and see how it works and see if there's anything else that we need, we need to be doing to improve the process. So I'm happy to table, uh, 214 for the time being. Um, resolution number 18-22 is, um, obtaining a second legal opinion to help the city council balance the interest of confidentiality and the public's right to access information. And I-
So could you put a motion on the table for it?
Yes. Um, so I'll put a motion on the table to, to discuss the, to discuss the, uh, resolution 1822.
Okay. Motion by Sylvia. Is there a second?
Is there a courtesy second? Because we, you know, having gone through the conflicts of interest disclosure form in the TIF rounds for 6.7 million dollars.
Sylvia, I don't want discussion. I want a second.
I know, I know. I'm asking, you know, I, I'm asking for a courtesy second.
Okay. She's asking for a courtesy second.
And this is about a gag order. This is a gag order being placed on confidential information.
I'm asking for a second.
I, I need a second just to discuss. You can all abstain from voting.
No. There's no second. The-
All right. Then the gag order, then the gag order stands. Uh, that's a travesty to access to information.
So let's go to, uh, your amendment of resolution 1812. Is that the next thing on the agenda, the farmer's market?
Yes. And the farmer's market, um, is 1812. That was passed in March and there was a ministerial error or clerical error, error. Um, it referenced monthly farmer's market schedule when in fact it should have been weekly, consistent with the prior year and consistent with the demands of the vendors who are interested in coming to the farmer's market. So I'd like to motion an amendment to change resolution 1822 to monthly.
Or 12?
Uh, 12. Mm-hmm.
And-
Sorry, what did you say?
Uh, a motion to amend resolution 1812 of the farmer's market from monthly to weekly.
Uh, is there a second?
I'd second. I don't know that I'm going to vote for it, but I think that's worth-
Okay, there's a second by Nick.
Worth having discussion on.
So a discussion.
Yep.
So, yeah, I mean, to me, I, I don't know if, if we talked about this last time or not. I, I think there's a trade-off. If you have- If you have it every week, then people know it's going to be that day of the week. If you have it every week, though, I, I get concerned that people get burnt out, and that the vendors are taking a lot of time to come and set up, and they, they may not be getting the, the sales that they need, and, and that would be my concern with having it every week.
Well, I want to address your burnout. I, I, I don't think that that is necessarily accurate. The reason we shifted from the monthly schedule over to weekly was because the vendors, many of whom are farmers, they have, they have a yield every day, they have plants growing, and they cut, and they said, we can't go to your farmer's market, it's not viable for us if we only show up once a month to offer our produce. And, you know, the chocolate lady said, same for me, I can't come down from Cedar Rapids to be at a market only once a month, because I could just as easily be elsewhere on those Tuesdays. So it's a pretty competitive market with vendors, and the, the driver for weekly last year were the vendors. They're the ones who are, are the ones who are calculating the, the, you know, the cost to their bottom line of participating in our farmer's market. And, you know, about eight of them are returning, and that's just without any publicity about the farmer's market right now. It's, you know, you know, the, the forms have not been posted, I mean, I think there's just a Facebook advertisement and that set.
Because they were incorrect.
Well, and so in any event, the point is that without, you know, this is a core group of people that are returning, and that's really unheard of in a very small, tiny farmer's market like ours. The other thing that I did recommend, in the, I think it was in the March report, these vendors also believe that it's very difficult to continue the farmer's market if it stays at the athletic club. It's hot, it's pavement, it's far away from the city, and it's not capturing the customer base that they thought they would be picking up from the hospital. Instead, they all agree that their core group of customers are the cities, are the city residents, and abutting neighbors from, from the Benton Sunset area that live around this area. So it's a really, it's a really small defined profile of cus, of a customer base. And more importantly, what I think is that, I think we need to give it a try, because we're moving it to a new location, Marietta. Marietta's right close to your big amenity within the city, which is your public park. It's right next to Grand View. The Grand View, I've spoke to Tom Fennell, and he thought it would be a great amenity for his residents, and he didn't think there would be a problem, in particular because there's no entertainment to be waking up any of the residents that might be sleeping, you know, during, you know, for whatever shift reasons they have at the hospital. So if it doesn't work-
I found a couple of hotels.
If it doesn't work out, I think we have good data to work from and good observations. But putting it out in the athletic club was difficult, and Virginia, just for the record, you said you were not coming back to sell flowers, because it's, you know, asphalt, and it's hot, and it's really difficult to be out in the sun. So I don't disagree that that is a legitimate reason. All I'm asking is that that, that's the background between that information. And I, and I said that in my report in March. Now, the interesting thing that we have is, everything, you know, messages went out with me with respect to the vendors, hey, good news, council is approving a test trial, well, not a test trial, but a new site location. Here's the site location, you guys tell me, you know, how many of you are going to return, because we need to know. And, you know, over the school, because we looked at the school as well as a, as a potential property to be on, but it just didn't work out, because it's also remote, and it also involves the administration, and you have competing school events that start ahead of the school schedule that would displace us. So that raised issues. So Marietta seemed to be the most good accessible area. The problem we have now, but there are solutions, is the parking. The parking, for whatever reason, has these rules in place that say, they get parking, and it doesn't matter, they get to have it. I've tried to work with Steve to find cracks in these rules, and to see how much of a risk we can take, and there are some options. One I would recommend-
Are you talking about the permit parking?
Yeah, the permit parking. So the permit parking right now is the big barrier, that's why there's a sense of urgency to get you and Nate to have them ready and distributed and circulated, so that the farmer's market can take place, and we can start, you know, working there. However, here are the scenarios that we're looking at. Legal has said that because of the permits, legal is not willing to agree that it's possible to amend the, the rules midway during the year. You know, that's, that's Steve's position, and, you know, that's legal, so I figured you guys probably won't be pushing that.
Can I, can I ask Steve quick? Steve, are you, are you there?
Steve?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Steve, quick question on the-
Yes, yes.
Are you hearing about the, the parking issue with the farmer's market? I, I just, I, it just would seem to me that we could just kind of do the equivalent of hooding the, the spots if we needed them.
And we don't need the whole block.
Yeah, you don't need all of them, just, we don't want to hood every single permit parking, but, yeah, leave, leave fif, I mean, if you leave the 15 that usually get used, is that a problem?
Nick, I'm sorry, there was some interference during the middle of your question, can you give me, give it to me one more time?
Sure, so we are talking about the Marietta permit parking, we're talking about changing it for, for, for the future, but in terms of right now, is it a problem to just, to just put cones out, hood whatever, some spots, prior to the farmer's market, so that people don't park there? I don't see what the issue would be, as long, especially if we leave, we're leaving, you know, 15 spots for permit parking.
Yeah, I mean, not having any feel for, you know, what Nate would know about how many people there usually are there and stuff. If, if 15 seems like a reasonable number that nobody's going to be left out, and if there's some sort of, some sort of, I guess, plan to address what if somebody is left out, you know, I mean, you know, that 16th person shows up-
Well, we, we already say in our guidelines that they're not guaranteed a spot, I mean, in the off chance that that happens, or-
That's what I said, yep.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm a lot more comfortable with 15 spots, and then we say, hey, look, you know, we told you you weren't guaranteed a spot. I'd be, I'd be even more comfortable if there could be an ad hoc, you know, could we park somebody on Grand View for the time, you know, for the time being, or something like that, but I, I think that's doable.
Okay.
So, so with that revised opinion-
Don't you need parking for people who want to stop and shop?
Right.
And there can be no parking-
And, I mean, you're talking 15 spots for vendors, right? But what about the people who drive by and want to park?
All the parking except for 15.
And they cannot-
Oh, yeah, I'm saying all but 15. Nate was saying that usually about 15, he's saying usually, are you saying like 10, or?
Yeah, on any given day, there's six or eight cars that are regular, the regulars there. Beyond that, there's, there's some that come and go, but there's only six or eight vehicles that are there routinely, day in and day out, week after week, that-
So you're saying the, about 15 who regularly park there, the rest of them being open?
Yeah, I mean, that, that block is, and that's one of the reasons, obviously, we addressed the parking issue, is that block is, the parking there is underused tremendously.
Yeah, because under no circumstances can they park between, from George on east, on Marietta. There's no parking there at all.
So we're having like 40-
So you've got 37 spots then to use between vendors and shoppers at the market.
Yeah, that should be plenty.
And then you're going to have them go to one area, or are you going to just?
Yeah.
Well, here's, here's what I was thinking.
Can I just mention, I, I've seen this in other towns, I know in, in Grinnell, they, they have a similar sort of setup, and, and the people back into the spot-
Right, that's what she's going to have them do.
And then they, they operate on the, yeah, on the sidewalk. And so you'd probably just have a certain section for the vendors, and then the rest for people who are-
That's exactly it, and not only that, but it's been my practice, you know, for two years now, to show up, I think, really early in the morning of the day of the farmer's market, with the, you know, with bright orange cones and printed sheets that say, warning, farmer's market starts at this time. So it gives enough notice to individuals to visually queue and avoid that area. So I would continue that practice with the help of the HPD, to make sure that we have all of those areas visually marked away, so that we, that we have, so we have something to work with. Now, the concern I have is how to make this work in case we have cars that are there, and it's already 5:00. And I think we could work around maybe those cars, and just move vendors around whatever cars might be parked there. I, I still, I think that's the least intrusive, and maybe reduces our risk for tow away, or towing away. So what do you think of that, Nate?
I mean, that's, that's your call, whatever you guys want to work around. My suggestion for the signage, if you did want to tow, would be similar to how the Tower Court, there was an arrow on either one of those signs that say, between those signs is the parking for the park only. If we're not going to do the entire block for farmer's market, I would include a similar arrow on each one of those signs that faces in, that says, on these days, this area is the farmer's market, which makes it easily enforceable for us, and easily understandable for everybody.
Okay, super. And before we get too caught up in this conversation, I do want to address, the farmer's market dates are the last week, the last Tuesday in May, going through the first Tuesday of September. And that, the rationale behind that is, we started really early, I think mid-May last year, and we went through mid-September, and they were not necessarily the best times, because there wasn't a whole lot of produce available, plenty of plants, and of course, school activities started taking up the second week of September, so that didn't work out. And from feedback, the vendors prefer, actually, our farmers prefer to go longer, but the other vendors don't. So to balance out a healthy-looking farmer's market, as opposed to a thinly, thinly, you know, set up one, we decided to do that range of time.
Do you think you're going to get a lot of food vendors? Because that seemed to be kind of the anchor tenants of the thing, you know, the, the pizza and the-
Right, I don't know, I sent out invites to, to vendors, and I'll tell you that the big trucks, we just don't have the scale. So many, many residents have told me, go out and bring the trucks, but, you know, I bring them out, and I exclude other food vendors, and they still just can't break even. So that raises some questions as to what we as a council could do. Again, a commission with probably more, or a group of volunteers to study this one, but I'm of the opinion that we probably have to start offering an incentive for, you know, pedestrian peddlers or food trucks to show up, otherwise, we don't have the scale. And what was very scary for me is that in reaching out in February to a number of food vendors, as many of them said, we were at your farmer's market, and you don't have the scale we need. That was, I'm like, wow.
But I do want to say, I don't like limiting the food vendors, because if you're, you know, if you go there, I used to go there for their tacos, and if, because I like that food vendor, and so I would want tacos. My husband wants something else.
Sausages, right.
So I pick something, you know, but if you alternate him-
That's it.
I'm not going to pick out, if I don't get my tacos, I'm going to go somewhere else to get the tacos, I'm not going to just purchase a hot dog, or, you know what I'm saying? Or if your family's hungry for pizza-
If I bring my kids there one time, and they get a thing they like, they're not going to want a different thing the next time we go, they want the same thing they had last time.
You know, I, I just don't like alternating, because when my kids were at home, they wanted pizza night, they didn't, I'd say, well, you know, the pizza guy's not there, so here's hot dogs. They're going to go, no, we still want pizza. Go to Pizza Hut, or go to, you know-
Maggie's.
Yeah, well, that wasn't existing. Go to Polly Ice, or go to Wig and Pen, you know? And so I'm saying, I don't like alternating that, because I want to, you know, you're hungry for a certain thing.
That's good feedback, and I've got to tell you, some of the vendors felt that they just didn't have enough scale.
Yeah, and I do understand that, too.
You know, we tested it out, and this is good feedback, we can certainly try it, it's not a, it's not a, you know, a deal breaker here.
Well, I would also request that we not have farmer's market on August 7th, because it will interfere with Crime Stoppers National Night Out. And we're putting a lot of money and effort into that, and I think it's the last thing that you could do, would be to take that into consideration.
I think this is, I think it can coexist, it's right next door, Dottie, so like-
No, that's not good enough, because it, it will interfere with her getting to the park.
What do you mean, this is, we're not talking, it's not going to be at the athletic club, it's going to be-
I know where it is, it's right down the street from me.
No, no, I'm telling you that Marietta, okay, let's, let's be very clear.
Yeah.
The, the farmer's market setup vending is on the eastern park of Marietta.
I don't, I do not care about that.
Okay, then I, I want to hear from the rest of the council.
They will interfere with access to Tower Court.
Okay, as long as we're taking a commentary on, on other issues, I'd like to hear everybody's ideas on whether that's a cancelable event. I see it as coexisting with the event sponsored by the National Night Out Police. I mean, if people don't want to shop, they'll be at your event, there's nothing that takes away or turns away.
It's a matter of-
Well, I think, first of all, I, I think, I mean, I think we're still too considering if it's going to be once a month, or every week. If it's once a month, that's probably not going to be an issue, but if it's, if it's every week, that would be an issue. With, with the every week versus once a month, I still, I, I guess I'm not fully clear on the food vendors. If we had it once a month, would all the food vendors come so that people would know, like, hey, everything's happening this, at this once-a-month event?
Once a month, Nick, I can assure you, I, I don't, I don't have positive, I, I wouldn't have a positive expectation as to-
How do we get more food vendors there, I guess? Every, every time we have one, that's, I guess, I don't know the answer to that, what is?
Invitations go out to people, that's all I can tell you, I, I'm actively following up with people. And I do use Iowa City's vendor list, and I ask them, and, you know, I can show you Facebook postings, where I get answers that say, no, not interested, can't make it, sorry. So-
I can't believe you that that's the feedback you've gotten, but it also seems like the evidence is that when it was monthly, it had better attendance.
It was very, well, it was right here, very close, I mean, it was North Sunset.
Well, we did it monthly once, didn't we do it one year monthly at?
Yeah, but we had, you know what we did? We had music, we had entertainment, we had Kevin, we had BF Burt opening the farmer's market, but-
You like a barbecue truck and-
I remember about that, when it was so loud, you couldn't talk to anyone.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, it was amplified, and it was too-
I think the music at the market was too loud.
I mean, I liked it when it was the banjo.
Well, I just want to get some solutions as to where we go, because invitations were sent out, core group is, is ready to go, they are super excited, and, you know, the athletic club is not going to be here next year. So if any changes need to be made, you need to have a good, a good baseline as to what, and I think-
I wasn't part of this discussion back at the beginning of the year. Sylvia said it was a clerical error, that it was listed as monthly.
Monthly, because I just pulled the one from the prior year.
I'm trying to get the impression here that it doesn't, you guys don't think that was a clerical error, and we haven't really discussed this as a group, whether it's going to be monthly or weekly.
It said first Tuesday, and I assumed that it meant first Tuesday. I mean, Sylvia, you prepared that resolution.
That's absolutely right, it's a clerical, because I borrow from the prior resolutions. Now, more importantly, the forms are the ones that are controlling. Those are the forms that have the schedule, they're shared with public, and they clearly have May through September.
But we had the resolution.
Right, and more importantly, in March-
And the council, yeah.
So I just don't feel, I don't feel positive that it would be well-received, but I could certainly, actually, I don't even, you know, either just say you don't want the farmer's market, because I don't think it'll work monthly. It's really difficult to work on a monthly basis with these folks.
Well, with Iowa City and Coralville both having such, you know, great markets.
Well, Coralville has it on Monday, and Iowa City has it on Wednesday and Saturday.
Saturday morning.
And even this core vendor group wanted to move it over to Friday, to see if they could attract more people, and, you know, again, change it up so that there's something to offer a value to, to the community. So my interest with the, with this event is building community, making it walkable, I mean, why are we using vehicles? But I totally understand, the athletic club is all the way over there, make it walkable, ride your bike, get your kids to ride their bikes, and go to the park, pick up something to eat.
This is a way better location, I think it allows you to take your meal over to the park to sit and whatever.
Right.
There's a lot of benefits here, I just- I just...
Yeah, the question is, once a month, or do you amend to every week?
Yeah, I'm kind of the same. I just wanted to be successful. I wanted, I don't want people to get burnt out and all of that. I'm, I'm also, I think I would be fine, if it's going to be every week, I think it would be fine to skip a week for the Crime Stoppers event that's going to be right at the park there, right, Dottie? You know, if people did show up because they were thinking the farmer's market was going to be there, I mean, they could go to, presume they could go to the Crime Stoppers event, Dottie?
And have free ice cream.
Yes.
An amenity, like, it's just going to be a bigger draw. I think you'll, to be honest, Dottie, I think you'll get more people there at Crime Stoppers if the farmer's market happened.
Uh-uh, I don't...
Because they, because they'll come to vote.
I tell you, well...
I know they had to choose in the past, and that...
Now, if they feel that there's not, it's not accessible, like, if they come up Sunset and they can't see they're getting through there. Last year, when we had the George Street renovation, we were, it was inadvertent that nobody moved the barriers the day of the, of the, and so nobody came to speak of. It was, I mean, there were...
Nobody came because there were construction, Dottie.
Hundreds of people came. There was no construction at all, Sylvia. The street was not, the street was accessible in terms of, they did half of George on one day, and a week later, they did the other half. It was not wet, it was trafficable, it was walkable, but the barrier signs were up there, and so nobody... Yeah, and so for all practical purposes, people were not going to, you know, violate the signs. So they didn't come. And the year before, we had, I can't even tell you how...
We had a monthly market on the same night.
Well, it, but it wouldn't be the, the first Tuesday. Well, I don't know. I think every week is ridiculous. That is my personal opinion.
Yeah, does the council want to vote yet, or...
Yeah, can I just motion to change the Resolution 1812 to, from monthly to weekly, and for the periods of May 29, the last Tuesday in May, to the first Tuesday in September?
I think we already have a motion that was seconded.
It's the amendment to Resolution.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it is, and Nick seconded it. You made the motion and Nick seconded it.
Okay.
And that's your amendment is every week. And so is everyone ready to vote? Oh, she's talking, sorry.
I can't hear her.
Well, they're kind of discussing what, what, what they want to do.
Dottie, how much, Dottie, how much parking do you need for your, how many people drive to the Crime Stoppers event?
Yeah, okay, so Sylvia, have you talked to the people that live on Marietta?
Most of them are rentals. There is a few owner-occupied homes that are changing. Actually, they're selling, so it's kind of sad. Yeah, so a letter was ready to go. It's just been postponed. Grand View is excited, and I know that the guy who does the egg distributions, Honey of an Egg, is super excited to see if he can get into that market.
I'm sorry, but for a taping purpose, having too many conversations at once is not working. I'm sorry.
So there's a motion on the table.
I mean, if you feel strongly that this can only work as a weekly market, I think the evidence points absolutely to the contrary, but I'm not going to take this.
I, I'm worried about the ones who have made it conditional for the farmer's market. I mean, we've got CSAs that are lined up to come, two of them. We have farmers that are going to be cutting their stuff, and they've told me we can't do your monthly. And that's why in 2016...
That's not the council's problem. That is your problem.
It changed from 2016. It's your problem, too, because it's your community.
No, it's because you aired in the motion and the time, and now you're expecting us to clean it up.
And that's fine, that's what counselors do, for the best interest and good of the people. We put our own personal distastes aside and we work.
Sylvia, can I ask, is it going to be a problem for the vendors if we did not have a farmer's market on the day of the Crime Stoppers event?
No, it would not be a problem. I just think that it's bad precedent without testing it. So it's fine.
But I'm, I'm hearing from Dottie that they're bringing a fire truck. They've got people who, you know, maybe, maybe bring young kids that babies need cars somewhat close. I would tend to support the weekly under the, based on the span of dates that Sylvia has raised, with the exception of the Crime Stoppers event.
All right, I could totally work with that.
April 7.
I think this is one of those times when, what's the joke about? A zebra is a horse designed by a committee?
I think, I think the contrary. I think it would be great to have...
What, I can't hear you, Virginia. What'd you say?
Um, I think, I think that evidence would show that a weekly market and that canceling it for Crime Stoppers are not the right decisions. But if this is what we feel strongly about, I will happily go along with it because I want this to be successful.
Thank you. Okay, so would you be the second motion?
Okay, so, we, we have a, you made the motion, he made the second. I'm just seeing if everybody's ready to vote.
Do I need to move to amend to include the omission of the Crime Stoppers date?
I'm just putting it in.
Okay.
So is that okay with the council to change the motion to that?
Yeah, I mean, can we just, if this, if turnout this year is like it was last year, Sylvia, can we please go back to a monthly market?
We can certainly try, yeah.
Yeah, that would be, I, I look at this year as being a test.
Right, and that's what I, that's what I think.
If it doesn't work, and make an adjustment in the future.
I, I agree with that, and I, I think this is...
We hadn't, we, we collected information last year.
Yeah, and this is...
The information we collected would indicate that this weekly didn't work the way monthly has the previous two years.
Well, what didn't work? Is it the attendance that didn't work? Or is it the attractions that didn't work? Or is it both? Or is it location? I think location really is...
Better location, so I hope it's...
I think, too, we really have to focus on the food vendors. I mean, that, to me, is what really draws people to have...
Absolutely.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, so council's ready to vote.
Yes, and if any of you want to sign up and help, you know, organically move this along, there's no reason why I need to be doing it all.
Do you want to read the motion a little bit with the amendments? Just so everyone makes, has it clear?
The motion is to change the farmer's market from a monthly to weekly with the exception of the Crime Stoppers night.
Mm-hmm.
April, August 7. Okay, a roll call vote.
Oh, where am I? Uh, Herbald.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Moore.
Aye.
You said aye.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
She did.
Aye.
Okay, Carrie.
Okay, very good. Is that everything? Yes, so we'll go to eGovernment.
I have a written report and nothing else to say.
Oh, okay, very good.
I, I had a question on your report. You mentioned a web committee. Who is, what's the membership of the web committee?
Mayor, the clerk, and the police chair because they have a website.
Okay, and then the other question I had is you had really high hits for the website. Does that mean we're getting spammed? I mean, spanned, like robo-hits?
No, I think that you read those little explanations that kind of tells you.
Well, just for the public knowledge, I mean, maybe people haven't read your report. That was one of the... Well, I don't know what the public's going to do, Lisa, but I figured I'd ask. Because I was concerned that, you know, we, we do have a lot of robotic, you know, attempts, and I thought that might be driving up the numbers. And it led me to think, well, maybe we should, you know, is it time for us...
Did you see that? It talks about certain things come in.
Yes, yes, crawlers or spiders. So, well, okay, you're right. So my question was, is there anything that we can do to improve our network so that we don't get that many hits? That's my question for you.
Take down the website. That would stop the hits coming on.
Because I know we're having problems with emails, getting them connecting to the network and...
Universityhikes.org is having no problems. And I go into Steve panel, every time somebody sends an email and says, "Oh, it went to, you know, I didn't get that email." I go into Steve panel and it shows that all of those, with the exception of...
Mine.
Two people who were using one certain personal web...
That's good now.
Email provider. And we're having a problem that was caused by that personal email provider.
Okay.
So it does show that all, it shows what fails and it shows what's delivered. And every once in a while, if you have a personal account and you're having everything forwarded to that account, then you have to set up your spam filters, you know?
Right, I've taken care of that.
Okay, yeah, so email's getting delivered.
Okay, now there's five agenda items that I want to ask if council wants to discuss or defer them. The first one is equal voices leveling the playing field for the Public Good Ordinance 222.
I'll table that for the next meeting.
Okay.
Because it is 9:40.
And then we have open and competitive bidding for Marriott Hotel PUD Agreement Management Position.
We really need to do this because this is the equivalent of One University Place Glenn Snyder's position. And we need to get moving, I think.
No, Sylvia, that isn't relevant, and I spoke with... I spoke with Jim today, and maybe you would like to address the, the issue.
Does council want to hear from him?
Yeah, is that okay? Okay.
I'm just checking.
I was, I was just going to make, try and make it clear that when we do this project, number one, we'll have our own civil engineers, which are, is MMS, and, and they've done the PUD, and they will also certify the PUD when it's done. So in other words, when we build the project, they come back afterwards. They certify that the project was done according to the PUD. We also have structural engineers that are, are going to stamp the drawings and, and certify that, you know, that the building is structurally sound. We also have MEP engineers, which are the electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and fire. So you'll have all those engineers that will submit stamped drawings to Terry Girt and to the city of University Heights. So I guess, and, and we also have two project managers which will be on site continually. So I'm, I guess I'm not sure what Glenn Snyder's is going to do, that's...
Yeah, and I don't want to leave the impression that that is who would get the contract. I mean, we're trending...
Oh, okay, all right.
We're trending to getting, are, being more open and competitive in our bidding. So I don't know if it would be Glenn Snyder or not. But generally, it would be making sure that the PUD agreement and all the exhibits on behalf of the city are taken care of. We know from One University Place that there's a number of checks that are taking place, like the ones that you mentioned, sort of internal certifications, engineers, project managers. But at the end of the day, we wanted for One University Place assurances that the agreement, the PUD agreement and the design schematics were all followed through, just from an independent perspective.
Okay.
We're receiving a monthly report on that, and this is a big project.
Oh, yeah, and, well, and I'm used to that when we're getting TIF money, like what we are from the city of Iowa City or the city of Corville. But in this situation, this is our building, and, and we're building it to our specs. Now, we, we will build it to the, to specs that we're submitting to the city. And, I mean, if you want to verify that, I got, I have absolutely no problem with that. I mean, and somebody like Snyder's or any other inspector, I mean, but, but you have in place Terry Girtz, who is acting in your behalf, and you also have Josiah, which all of this information will be submitted to them, and they're absolutely welcome on the site anytime. So I, I guess I, if you want, if you want to hire somebody else, it, it seems somewhat of a redundancy to me, but you certainly can do it.
Well, Jim, when you have built other Marriott entities, like the one in Corville...
Yes.
Uh, did you operate in the same way there?
No, we've never had...
Was that a TIF? Go ahead.
Well, we had, we had a partial TIF with the city of Corville, and we did stormwater management for them. And, and we, and we actually did a street. We, we redid the street going into Coral Ridge Mall. That was a separate part. Now, that was inspected by Scott Larson, who's the city engineer, which would be Josiah's position. And, but we never had a, I guess, a liaison, I guess, whatever, whatever.